2018 meeting of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors is called to order. My name is Meg Bomke. I represent the Falmouth District and serve as the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke.
Here.
Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Dootenheffer.
Here.
Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Ms. Shelton.
Here.
Mr. Snellings.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. This morning, the Board held a press conference, and some of our colleagues were here, others were at a meeting for the Chamber of Commerce, so I apologize that they couldn't be here. We received a AAA bond rating from Moody's Investors Service. This is the third AAA rating Stafford has received, officially making it a triple AAA locality. Stafford has received two AAA bond ratings, one from Fitch Investor Service and one from Standard &amp; Poor's, but we received just this past week the distinction of receiving a AAA bond rating from Moody's Investors Service. It's truly an accomplishment to celebrate on behalf of the Board, and I'd really like to commend past Boards that set up financial policies, put them in place, and we've adhered to those policies and we've even increased some of them, and current staff members who worked towards this goal for many years. I would also like to congratulate the schools Colonial Forge, Conway Elementary, Kate Waller-Barratt Elementary, Park Ridge Elementary, and Rocky Run Elementary Schools for receiving the 2018 Purple Star Designation. I personally was not familiar with this. The Virginia Purple Star Designation is awarded to military-friendly schools that have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to our nation's military. Schools that earn the award will receive a special Purple Star recognition to display on-site. The Virginia Department of Education's Military Student Support Process Action Team formed by the Virginia Department of Education received all school applications for the award. Final approval on awards was made by members of the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on the educational opportunity for military children. And they will also receive a resolution, an award coin, and a letter of recog-- excuse me, recognition. Congratulations to our schools on being one of the first school divisions in Virginia to have schools selected to receive this honor. Congratulations is also due to Martha Hutzel, who is the Director of Central Rappahannock Regional Library. Mrs. Hutzel recently was awarded the Patricia Lacy Metzger Distinguished Achievement Award. This award goes to the woman who has distinguished herself as a leader in her field, who demonstrates personal and professional integrity, and shows a commitment to her community and lifelong learning. Congratulations to Martha Hutzel. May I have a motion and a second to approve the regular agenda?
Send move.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion. Cast your vote, tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. We have no additions or deletions to the agenda today, but next, I am honored to recognize one of Stafford County's truly awesome citizens, Mr. Percy Pondexter. Mr. Pondexter, if you would please join our Griffiths-Widewater District Supervisor, Mr. Jack Cavalier, at the dais for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing you and your remarkable contributions to the citizens of Stafford County.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce this most distinguished gentleman beside me here today. His history in this county, and particularly in Widewater, is pretty much unsurpassed. And I know maybe a lot of people don't know, I'm sure Mr. White back there knows his part of his history, but we're here to talk about that a little bit more today, and I'm blessed to have a couple of original Widewater guys up here, they're in uniform, these brown tan things here. And actually, Captain Carey, Steve Carey, this was really his idea, and I'm glad we're doing this because this is very, very important and much long overdue, Percy. And, you know, Steve is gonna speak some words of wisdom here, and perhaps the Sheriff too, and the Chief, and so we're gonna do a nice little presentation here.
Thank you, Mr. Cavalier. First and foremost, I want to thank Jack Cavalier and the entire Board for doing this. I think of all the important work that you do, this is the absolute most important work that you do, is recognizing those folks whose shoulders on which we stand, whose service is forever linked to the success that we enjoy here in this county today. And Mr. Pondexter, on behalf of a grateful Widewater community, a grateful Stafford community, the entire state, and first responders everywhere, I want to thank you for your service to our county here. I pray for me and my life, as you know, as a kid, I grew up watching you serve the fine people of this county, and one calls for service, and I just, you've had tremendous influence and impact on my life. And I want you to know that we love you, I want you to know that we respect you, and we appreciate you. And this county would not be the county that it is today without people like you and your service. So I just want you to know that I love you, brother, and God bless you. With the last name of Decatur, I know you're thinking, I grew up in Widewater, and actually I didn't, but not too far, Courthouse Road, but on behalf of the entire Stafford County Sheriff's Office, and on behalf of me and the Chief and the Sheriff's Office and Fire Rescue, we want to thank you. You're definitely a beacon of light and hope, you're someone who we can aspire to, and we're so grateful for you, for your commitment to the community and everything you've done. We truly love you, and we need more people like you, because we need role models, people who we can look up to and follow their path. So on behalf of everyone, everyone in public safety, and I'm very blessed to be the Sheriff, but I stand on the shoulders of a lot of great people, on behalf of all the sheriffs before me, we want to thank you and congratulate you, and say God bless you to you and your family.
Well, I do want to thank all your family and friends who came out tonight, and we are gonna do a presentation here, it's a formal presentation that, like I said, long overdue to certainly one of the fine patriarchs of Widewater and a truly distinguished career that you've lived through and served this community. And so I do want to let you know too, that I will be presenting a similar plaque at Oak Grove Baptist Church at a future date when we can all be there and let that reside in the church, where I know you've been a member for many, many years, and I see Deacon Winn out there, and we're glad you could come today, sir. So we'll get to that now. I'll read the proclamation. "It's a proclamation honoring and commending Mr. Percy Pondexter for his service to the citizens of Stafford County. Whereas Mr. Percy Pondexter moved to Stafford County in 1961 and has been devoted to helping the residents of Widewater and other residents of Stafford County ever since. And whereas Mr. Pondexter and his late wife, Elnora, were married for 52 years and were devoted congregants of Oak Grove Baptist Church. And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Pondexter, through their ministry at their church, provided information to people about local and regional services, and helped transport people to the appropriate agencies for sign-up and to receive services, as well as to the polls to vote. And whereas Mr. Pondexter is a life member of the Stafford branch of the NAACP, having served as treasurer for many years. Whereas Mr. Pondexter is a life member of the Widewater Volunteer Fire Department, where he served from 1975 to 1985." And listen to this one, because this is very important. "And served as Virginia's first African-American president of volunteer fire department. And whereas Mr. Pondexter served Stafford County Government honorably on the Cable Commission and as well as a road viewer, someone who would drive around the county noting that the condition of the roads in Stafford County and reported the needs to VDOT. And whereas Mr. Pondexter served his country by working at the CIA, where he retired after 30 years. And whereas the Board wishes to bring to the attention of citizens everywhere the love and dedication shown by Mr. Pondexter to his community and his country. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the 7th day of November 2018, that it be and hereby does honor and commend Mr. Percy Pondexter
I want to thank you all for everything. God gave me the do, and I've done the best I could. Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
but these are really, truly the good things that we get to do. And we love to recognize people from Stafford County that have just been great citizens and really stepped up and done a lot more than they ever really needed to do. So again, congratulations, and thank you for being a part of Stafford County. Now we're gonna have presentations by the public. Please remain courteous and respectful to members of the audience and to the Board. If you are here to speak about this evening's public hearing, please hold those comments until the 7 o'clock PM session. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Speak slowly and clearly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor your time. Green indicates the start of your remarks, yellow indicates that you have one minute to wrap up, and red obviously means your time is up. At this point in time, I do have four speaker cards. After I call these four speakers, I'll open it up to others in the audience. The first speaker is Tim Haddix.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Tim Haddix. I live at 38 Sunset Drive, at the very end of Decatur Road, which is my topic this morning. The residents have submitted several detailed requests concerning the condition of Decatur Road over the years. Most recently, requests and concerns were addressed in writing to the county on the 28th of December 2017 and again on the 25th of August 2018. I believe the copy of these requests had been provided to the Board to include other addresses. If you do not have those, I can provide them. Seeing no action by the county, a town hall meeting was held with the help of Mr. Cavalier, thank you, sir, and Griffiths-Widewater Area Supervisor, to discuss a way forward between the residents and the county. A town hall meeting was held at 9 o'clock AM on 6 October 2018 at the Widewater Volunteer Fire Department to discuss the conditions of Decatur Road. Mr. Cavalier arranged for several interested parties to attend, to include himself, Mr. Mike Smith, Deputy County Administrator, Senior Deputy Robert T. Colbath of the Sheriff's Department, who is also a resident of Decatur Road, Ms. Patricia Harmon, the General Manager of Acquah Harbor, Chief Bob Zanicki, who's the Widewater Volunteer Fire Department Chief at this point, Mr. Kyle Bates, also a tenant from VDOT, who is Assistant Resident Administrator. The meeting was opened to point out that although there are several, what I call aggregating factors concerning Decatur Road, the problem with that road is the road itself. Anyone who travels it knows exactly what I'm saying. Although main point was Decatur Road, the aggravating parts that add-on to a road that's already deteriorated are, there are current timbering operations to include avenues, logging trucks using the physical effects on the road itself, safety, and hindering traffic. These trucks are too large to make the turns on Decatur Road. A double-yellow line down the center of that road does not solve this problem. It's physically impossible for them to make those turns. The opening of the back gate from Acquah Harbor adds to that, adds an increase in traffic. I will note that the General Manager of Acquah Harbor has said that one more car on Decatur Road is one too many. There's inherent need for emergency services, utilities, and et cetera to get up down there, and it's not built for it. There's no way to bail out. If you get head-on with a car, there's nowhere to go. You're in a ditch, or you're in a tree. The floor remained open, and Mr. Cavalier explained the process that the Board has to consider roads. I've noticed on your current comprehensive plan and your data that Decatur Road is in the top 10. I would request that a safety study be done on Decatur Road because it is unsafe. At the end of our meeting on that day, Mr. Bates from VDOT followed my wife and I up Decatur Road in its entirety and back, and he was pretty amazed. So he knows the situation. I would encourage the Board, individually or as a group, on a field trip, jump in a Stafford County school bus, take the ride all the way to my house and come back. It's about three and a half, four miles, and it is precarious, very. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tim Rudy.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. I want to bring an issue of concern to me to your attention. A couple of years ago, I came before the Board, and I realize now that not all of you were on the Board at that time, so please don't take any of these comments personally. But I came to the Board in my opposition to the imposition of a separate fee to those who were going to use the landfill. I spoke my piece, and the self-proclaimed financial conservatives at the time chose not to go that route, so the next couple of years, I've purchased a year tag to go to landfill. I tell you that to get here. Usually when a product or a service increases its cost, charges more money, the product or the service usually improves, or at the very least should stay the same. The system at the landfill is at least partially broken. A little while ago, I went to the landfill to mostly drop off recycles. I believe in it, I think it's the right thing to do, I think everybody should do it, and I think the system should encourage that and promote that. As I got inside the perimeters of the landfill, I noticed there was quite a long line backed up from the dumpsters. There's additional dumpsters, I noticed. I said, I don't, that's to myself, I didn't say, know what that was for. But I noticed people scurrying around from one dumpster to another, back to the same one, back to the other one, and they're taking things out, throwing them around. I didn't know what it was for. So I waited about 10 minutes to get up there, and when I finally got up there, I realized there were signs that say, put your bottles here, no plastic here, that kind of thing. So now I guess we're separating our own recycles. At that time, I got my big container out, and I did the same thing everybody else was doing, taking what was on top and throwing it in here, going back to there, throwing it in there, just running around like a chicken. So I noticed another sign up there, you guys got a lot of signs up there, another sign that says, if you have any concerns, see the attendant, or call this number, I guess it's the R-Board main number. So I did. I wandered around the front, there was a very nice 20-something-year-old boy up there that was listening to me intently, and he did exactly what he was told to do. He listened to me, smiled, and said, thank you, have a nice day. Well, feeling very patronized, I decided to call that number, knowing it was a weekend, I wouldn't get anybody, I'd leave a message for somebody to call me. It's obvious to me that the R-Board doesn't want constructive input, because as I answered the phone, there's about a 90-second prelude, very nice prelude, for someone who doesn't know what's going on at the landfill tells its location, what its uses are, the days that are open, the hours that are open, very nice. And then it says, any comments, go ahead and leave them. So I started to leave a message, I said, Tim Rudy, I live at such and such address, my phone numbers, and I get the second beep, immediately followed by prompts to say, if you're satisfied with this message, push 1. If you want to re-record, push 2. So I pushed 2 to re-record. Now, I'm gonna skip this, because I'm running out of time, but five times, I tried to get in there, I finally left it with, Rudy, phone number, call me. Well, I didn't get a phone call, because the people on the other line probably thought I was an idiot, so they didn't call me. So anyway, I think the system's broken. While I was there, I actually had to help senior citizens put their trash into the dumpsters because they couldn't lift it, but you need to promote usage, and I'm afraid that the way the system is now, I'm gonna stop recycling, I'm afraid other people are going to too. Now whoever's in charge of this, I don't know, and I plan on speaking at the R-Board meeting too, whoever's in charge of this needs to get their head out of sand and get up there and look what's going on, because it's just not working.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have Mike Lynn.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Mike Lynn, and I am a private utility operator. I'm the elusive Bigfoot that people think don't exist on this board, operate the public water and wastewater utilities on the private side. So I just want to give you a little bit of information about the use of private utilities in the state of Virginia. Any system, whether it's water or sewer, that's proposed to serve more than 50 houses or 50 connections, has to be approved and be operated under a private utility by the State Corporation Commission. That doesn't mean that it has to be me or one of my competitors. The HOA can form their own public-private utility under the State Corporation guidelines. So it doesn't have to be a person like me. That includes an application, financial statements, projected rates, the rates include normal operations and maintenance, utilities, taxes, fees that you would expect for normal repairs, and then a replacement set aside for replacement of the system somewhere down the road. I think that what's been, the main concern of the Board is the failure of these systems or the potential for failure. And I want to address that in that the systems are obviously designed to a higher standard than the mass drainfields of yesterday, so there's a lot less risk of failure. In the event that a system does fail, if it's a system that's regulated by the State Corporation Commission, and it either fails to meet performance standards with the Health Department, or there's a financial failure, then the State Corporation Commission comes in and takes that asset, they seize the asset. So it's a much more seamless process than a bond and a hearing, and who's gonna do this, and who's gonna do that. They come in and seize it, and then they run it, and they figure out what's wrong, then at the end of the day, they continue to run it, or they find another person to run it. So I just wanted to let you know that it's not the old mass drainfield of yesteryear that the HOA people are just left to own and suffer with, and that's all I gotta say. Thanks so much.
Thank you. John Paulo.
My name is John Paulo, I'm President of the Canterbury Estates Homeowners Association, and I'm here on behalf of the HOA Board for our association. I'm here to actually follow up on an email that I sent to you all last night regarding, indirectly regarding the agenda item that involves community drainfields, and I'm not here specifically to speak on that point, but to some, to comment on how my community somehow got dragged into the debate related to the proposed ordinances, and we are very, very concerned about certain types of misinformation and confusion being spread about our community's system and our HOA's operation and maintenance of it. Specifically, it's been represented that Canterbury Estates system has fallen into disrepair with the implication that the system has utterly failed. It was also, it also has been misrepresented that our community has mismanaged the operation and maintenance of the system, and further, it's been misrepresented that many homeowners in our community is asking the county to take over the management and operation of the system. And I'm here to simply set the record straight, and also, the email was aimed at doing the same thing, that for over 30, this community is over 30 years old, and we have been long operating and maintaining the system. We have not had issues when issues might arise with respect to equipment. We were very diligent about jumping onboard and dealing with the issues expeditiously. The HOA has always maintained and continues to, and is even more diligent, on maintaining adequate reserve funds to handle the issues, and we have on-call and retained reputable engineering firms to help us with respect to the maintenance and operation of the systems. And related to that, recently, we did discover a problem with some equipment that has led to some issues with a portion of our drainfield, but has not led to a failure at this point in time, and we are working with a consultant to, and have an application in, in order to get the appropriate approvals, to get the necessary repairs taken care of, and move on with things. And in closing, basically, I want to set the record straight that we want and have every intent to continue operating and managing our system. We're not looking to the county to do anything, to take over anything, and we want to get the needed repairs done as soon as possible, and hopefully not, continue to be distracted with respect to our issue of getting our repairs done versus the issue of the ordinances that are under consideration by the Board. And I'll be sticking around, agenda item, I think it's 14, is on, is gonna be coming up, and I will be sticking around if you would have any questions you would want to ask me at that point in time, or now for that matter, you know, happy to.
We can't take questions now, since we're in the public comment period, but I appreciate your offer.
Yeah, but in any event, I'll be sticking around.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the Board chambers that would like to address the Board? If so, please come forward.
Paul Wodowski, Eight Picket Lane, yeah, won the bad beat last Tuesday at MGM. Yeah, I won the bad beat last Tuesday at MGM. Pretty interesting. Going to fund all my campaigning. I'm really glad that I hear about this private utility aspect. For 30 years, we haven't got a public Stafford County water and sewer bill. We've had property management companies who run our illegal HOA, because it's not registered in the Virginia State Corporate Commission. That will all come out on December 3 at 9:00 a.m., when I put a tow truck driver in front of the court case for stealing my active-duty Army vehicle from private property. Boy, I love the comments about the landfill. Now, you pay for service. Wow. And I think for your signs, you should be fined $100. So I'm going to go take pictures of those and do like that one speaker brought to you, because I'm tired of seeing these marijuana medical signs around too, because I want to, I want to get some revenue in this county, because, oh, I forgot to let you know, I'm running for a Commissioner of Revenue and the Board of Supervisors at the same time. So that'll be a precedent, okay? And if you think I'm joking, Joe Biden ran for Senator of Delaware and Vice President, and I'm a voter in good standing, so I know I get one vote each, just like I did in the first district last election, because I voted for myself. Wow, it's just amazing what's going on in this county. I spent my time yesterday at Ferry Farm, because I keep hearing all this whining about that elementary school, when the real issue, because there's no issues, you all know, get rid of the word issue, there's opportunities. And if you're in an HOA, you're in one of the Houses of Aristocrats of Stafford County, so welcome. Because that's what the problem is in this county. We already pay county taxes, state taxes, federal taxes, and now, you're going to try to set a precedent that you take care of everyone's water and sewer bill? Well, I have ordinance 82-341 that says that I'm entitled to public water and sewer, and it's not me I care about. It's those 65 other owners, because I'm financially independent. I won the bad beat at MGM.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the Board chambers that would have liked to address the Board? If so, please come forward.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, good afternoon. My name's Ryan Farugie, Stafford County resident, 262 New Hope Church Road, Stafford County. Congratulations to you, Mr. Cohen. Wanted to take a moment and briefly talk about the mass drainfield ordinance. As you guys know, I'm a local engineer, design a majority of these drainfield systems in this county and basically every other neighboring county around here. And based on the last meeting, I wanted to just briefly talk about some of the misinformation that's being disseminated, disseminated out here. There's a lot of comparison being made to drainfields from the '60s and '70s, a lot. That's like comparing a Model T to a Tesla. The technology nowadays is so far superior. I was able to find Bigfoot and bring you guys a utility operator, because I know that nobody thinks they exist. They very much exist, they're out there. So while we are basing code and establishing code from drainfields, four or five drainfields that are failing, which are a problem, we admit that they're a problem, they need to be fixed. There are professionals out here that can fix them. But why code is being regulated and passed based on these four or five examples is really, really just confusing to everybody on our side of the, on our side of the industry. But I did just want to clarify a couple of things that, so that maybe everybody can be a little more informed. Mass drainfields are preferred. They're preferred over individual sites, from, by the Department of Health, period. They are preferred. The effluent coming out of these systems is cleaner than any individual site, any individual system that's out there. And they are regulated. We have to meet nitrogen, we have to meet phosphorus, we have to meet turbidity standards. I mean, the permit goes on and on and on. They are significantly cleaner, and therefore better for the environment. As previously stated from Mike Lynn, these systems are serviced by regulators and serviced by operators that are regulated by the SCC. And mass drainfields, just like an individual system, have a primary and a reserve in the case of a failure. And they even have a catastrophic failure event, if that ever were to occur, that they can be serviced via, they can be regulated via surface discharge, just like most municipality plants. So again, just confused as to why that all these factors are being ignored, or maybe not being presented. You know, I think a lot more research needs to be conducted before any serious code is passed, and as always, I will make myself available to any and all of you or staff to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the Board chambers that would like to address the Board?
Good afternoon. My name is Jo Knight, 103 Nautical Cove. I don't have to come up with as much as I was going to, because we've had others speak. But I felt terribly bad the last time that, when I mentioned Canterbury, was a wonderful example, and it had been in existence over 30 years. And you've heard today that it is. And I think that they feel it'll go on for decades without any issues, and yet, they've got reserves, and they're responsible. And that's the way they should be set up. They were not years ago. I know of Garrison Villa Estates that I'm sure stands out, in different minds, but of course, we had public utilities headed in that direction by that time, and that was done 50 years ago. So I hate to see decisions made by our governing body because of knee-jerk reactions to a few people making statements. And I think it occurs a lot more than we realize. Our county makes so many regulations that we're known for, regulation, regulation, regulation. And I think when we make a new one, sometimes we probably ought to try to find one we can eliminate, just to make them a little fewer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board? Okay, with that, I'm going to bring it back to the Board members. We'll have Board reports. Mr. Cavalier.
I defer.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Jones. Several things. First, I attended and chaired the meeting of the Joint Schools and Supervisors Meeting. To be honest, since getting on this Board, and I understand from Mr. Foley predating me being on the Board, there has been issues and confusion over how things work as far as getting things on the agenda and et cetera for that body. And so, we've been working for ways to sort of correct that, fix that. One of the major things that we are going to be doing at our November meeting at the end of the month is looking at the charge of this body, because quite honestly, there, as we've discussed, when we were looking at various subcommittees of this body, there's an awful lot of committees that deal with the school systems, and there's an overlap in responsibility. So what I am going to ask from the Board members, and I'll send an email, but I'll say it verbally here publicly, is if you will get me your thoughts either in, by telephone call, in person, or in writing, by email, to me by a week from Friday. That way, I can, what you envision, what you think the charge of the three-on-three body should be, and your thoughts on all these multiplicity of boards that deal with different school topics, then we can sort of streamline them. I'll work with Mr. Foley on that, and we can go forward with that. I know Ms. Bomke has been very vocal in her thoughts, but I'm sure she'll like to give it to me in writing, or to make sure that I, or we can sit down. One of the things that was very good at the meeting that we had was that the School Board has worked on enrollment numbers, not the projections as of yet, and so I've asked staff to forward that along to you. When we met, they hadn't brought those forward to their actual Board, so that I didn't send it at that point to you all, but I thought that it'd be good to get that to you, so you would have that. There had been much misinformation about various enrollments at the various schools, and so they've actually had some accurate information by that meeting, and then they'll update it for future ones. So you'll get an, comes some communication from me about that, so we can move forward on that issue. Secondly, I toured a company down in my end of the county, which I'm very happy to say is my end of the county, Green Corp., and I did that with Congressman Whitman. This is a very impressive, local, growing company, and it was interesting to see them, and also, it was interesting to hear their need for workplace and for more workers. And then, the next day or so, I communicated that with our Social Services Department, which is excellent, and how it deals with things and well with the school system, to try to put our graduating students and our working students with companies that are locally, and try to keep, help our employers with hiring locally, and it's, and get people good jobs with good futures. I attended the Interfaith Vigil at the Temple, for the Temple of Life shooting in Pittsburgh, at the Temple Beth Shalom. I was very pleased to be there with, I believe, the Superintendent of Schools was there, Ms. Hazard was there from the school system. I think there were 15 ministers from various faiths there. My minister, actually, Ms. Bomke and my minister was there. It's the first time I had been in a synagogue, so it was a very interesting and moving experience. And it just reinforced the idea that we need to be working together for civility and bigotry and hatred. And lastly, as my tie indicates, we are getting into Veterans Day, and I know the county is having our ceremony at 9:00 a.m. at our Armed Services Memorial on Friday. It's, quite honestly, it's not just a day for people to go shopping, it's a day to pay honor for those people who have served and their families. So if you can't attend our ceremony at 9:00 a.m. on Friday, I encourage you just to come up and look at our terrific Armed Services Memorial, which is very moving, and shows the best of Stafford and the best of the men and women in the military and their families. And that concludes my remarks.
One quick question, Mr. Cohen. Do you want comments on the charge of the Joint Committee from the entire Board, or just those on?
Just individuals.
That are on the committee?
No, from everybody. Everybody on the Board, because, quite honestly, and we've had this discussion about there being such an overlap. And different people have served on it at different times, and it just seems that rather than taking an entire Board meeting, if people give me their input, we can sort of, Mr. Foley and I have had conversations since January on this, about how can we streamline this and make this more efficient.
Okay, and when would you like this information?
By a week from Friday, so that gives you time to celebrate the holiday.
The Friday before the holiday.
After, the week after.
Right. The Friday before the holiday.
No, a week from Friday.
Correct. Same thing. All right, thank you. Mr. Dudenheffer.
Just briefly, for public information, our Board meeting schedule is unusual between now and the end of the year because of the holidays. So there are only two more Board meetings. We normally meet on the first and third Tuesdays, but now, we're meeting on the 27th of November and the 11th of December. And I think we're meeting the second Tuesday in January, because the first is a Tuesday.
We're going to be discussing that.
Very odd time schedules that we have here, and to try and accommodate the holiday schedule, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Mrs. Mauer.
All right, couple of things. First, I want to congratulate everybody who participated in the AG Right debate. I had the pleasure, and I just, it was incredible. So I used to do high school and college speech and debate, had a slight scholarship during college, and this is kind of where I geek out. So it is one of my favorite things to do every year, and I wanted to congratulate all the debaters, and I'm very excited to say that I'm going to be debating, or helping to judge the speech and debate tournament coming up on the 17th, and I believe along with Ms. Shelton. Also, attended the PRTC meeting. A couple of items to note for the Board is, I service treasurer on that Board, and one of my concerns when I first got onto that Board was the financial reports we would get, they weren't decision-making documents. You couldn't tell how much gas tax money we were getting, how it compared to budget, whether we were, you know, above projections, below projections, and more importantly, most importantly, how much money we had available here in Stafford County to put towards our transportation projects. And so, I submitted some changes to the PRTC. I'm very happy that they're going to be changing these financial reporting documents, but a couple of items for this Board to note, as we move along with gas tax money and we receive more gas tax money, I'm going to ask this Board to start looking at a financial policy as it relates to PRTC and gas tax funding. So we, right now, we have a little bit over $3 million in our PRTC fund, but don't get excited, because we need to ensure that we have 100% of available funds for our subsidies for VRE and for PRTC at the beginning of the year, because the first payments due at the beginning of the year, second payment due mid-year. But I want, as we move along with more and more financial policies, I think it's really important, because it's taken me several years to kind of figure out how the money moves there. And so, I've been talking to Tom about that. Expect to see some financial policies related to PRTC to come back to this Board. Additionally, one thing I also asked on PRTC is, I asked for jurisdictional financial impact statements. So we vote on a lot of items on PRTC that have no relation to Stafford County, i.e. bus operations for Prince William County. And so, we vote on those, we usually go with the jurisdiction that is putting up the funds. But there was an item that came up before PRTC, and they called it budget neutral. And in the budget-neutral item, they were moving staff members around. However, when they moved the staff members around, it actually increased the amount of subsidy that Stafford County had to contribute to the tune of $10,000 a year. And so, now, what I have asked, and we didn't find this out until the resolution was said and done, because we were told it was budget neutral. Yes, it was budget neutral to PRTC. Yes. So another item that we're going to be seeing coming forward with PRTC is jurisdictional impact statements, financial impact statements that come with the resolutions. And so, those are the main things. We do have approximately 700, possibly $900,000 that might be coming back to Stafford County or available to Stafford County for transportation as a result of the new gas tax bill. So I'm a little bit excited about that, but just be cautiously optimistic, please. I also want to congratulate Tom. Tom, I've known you for more than a decade. I worked on your first campaign, I was your treasurer, and there's nothing, nothing more enjoyable, to see you realize a dream that you've wanted for quite some time. So congratulations on your win, and I look forward to continuing to serve with you on the Board. And finally, I would like to remove item number four from the consent agenda.
Ms. Shelton.
Hi. Earlier today, a lot of you guys weren't because you're here, because you were probably doing your primary job. While we were here discussing my favorite subject right now, which happens to be Brook Road, what are we going to do about Brook Road? One of the opportunities we have, and that was brought up by staff, is for us to do a study of the water. Now, I don't like studies either, but unfortunately, we have to have studies to be able to understand what the underlying causes and the root causes for some of the challenges that we have. And you guys that live on Brook Road, you know there's all kinds of challenges. You've got the river there, you have flooding from, there's this normal flooding that unfortunately seems to be happening a lot, as well as potential stormwater management issues. And so, we haven't got to the point that we've agreed to it, but at that committee, now it goes to the full Board, we'll be seeing that next time. And I'm excited about it, because it's a part of a solution. And part of that solution is important, because you know how many millions of dollars it would take to raise Brook Road? So I'm looking for any kind of interim activity that we can do to lessen the impact of all the water issues that we have. So yay, that was an awesome thing. I wish you guys would have been here, you would have cheered. And so, I sort of cheered inside. And so, the next thing I want to talk about is, I got to ask a question earlier this morning, and I just want to make sure everybody knows, if you didn't, Brook Road, where the other end was closed, it's going to be closed until January. Sorry you have to deal with that, but when we get, yay, when we get our roads fixed, sometimes we have to deal with some of those challenges. But just put it on your calendar, around January, into January, then that'll be opening up. A big thing I want to talk about is fires. Acquahia has had an undue amount of fires in the last few weeks. Fires related to people not cleaning out their fireplaces, Acquahia Harbor had one of those, we had a fire that was in Acquahia Town- We had a fire that was in the Acquahia Town Center. All of you guys saw the impact of that. We've had some other things. And I want to remind you guys, this is the heating season. We want to use fire pits, we want to use fireplaces, please go clean them out. Go spend the money to clean out your fireplace. In fact, I'll talk about mine. I live in a timber home, and during my briefing and talking to the fire department, they were like, I said, what's the number one thing you have to worry about in a timber home? Because it's all wood, right? And they went, your fireplace. I'm like, what about my fireplace? And they said, you got to clean it out. And I'm like, I've lived there four years, I've never cleaned it out. And so I went and had, oh yeah, shake your head. But yeah, I went and had it cleaned out, and the guy was absolutely shocked. So I, I'm just telling you, you never know. It's not something I ever thought about, but you know, just our own county fire department saved me from a fire, I'm absolutely sure. So I just wanted, closing comments, just encourage you guys, go think about fire safety, look around, make sure that your fires are good. If your fire pit is, if you're in an apartment and you're using a fire pit, you might want to rethink that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Snellings?
Just very briefly, I want to congratulate Mr. Cohen. You did something that none of us have done. You stepped out and ran as an independent, and you may have company in the future. So congratulations.
And Ms. Baumke?
I too want to congratulate Mr. Cohen on his race. Congratulations. Great job running. Just clarify one thing Ms. Mauer said. The Gale Middle School debate is actually next, it's on Wednesday, the 14th, from 6:30 to 8:00. So it looks like all three of us are judging. That will be fun. And I wanted to remind everybody, like Mr. Cohen said, that the Armed Services Memorial or ceremony is this Friday at 9:00. In the event of rain, it will be held here in the board chambers. And with that, that's all I have. And do we have a report from the county attorney, Ms. McLendon?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have no report at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Foley?
Madam Chair, we just have the construction report. Our Deputy Director of Public Works, Brian Council, will be giving that, and we will limit it to that to get us on to some of the other items on our agenda.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Brian Council, Deputy Director of Public Works for Capital Projects, a few projects of note to go over with you today, give a construction status update. First on the list is the Garrisonville Road project. As you know, it's, it's been, it's been open for a while, and it's, VDOT's taken it over for maintenance. Of particular interest from the public, though, is being able to turn left off of Garrisonville Road onto Center Street. There's one remaining punch list item on that project that's, it's holding up the closure of it, but VDOT has agreed to move forward with us on addressing that application from, from, from the county to address that light issue and work out the timing. So I'll take them, that, at their word, that they're going to work on that despite the project not being closed out. So hopefully, I'll have good news to report next month or the month after that, that that's been done.
Brian, can you get advanced slides?
Oh, okay, I was going off my own. This is better. Brook Road Safety Improvements, as Ms. Shelton alluded to, the road was, the section, about the midsection of that project's going to be closed until about, hopefully before the end of January, but that's our schedule. We hopefully can get it open before that. Work is progressing very nicely. Despite some of the weather setbacks, they've made some progress on that. The Belmont Ferry Farm Trail, two remaining phases on that. One's under construction, one's in, in design. Phase four is under construction. If you've driven down River Road, you've seen some of the progress there. They, they have been limited to what they've, what they've been able to do to the weather, but they have made some progress. They're not indicating right now that they're going to exceed the construction duration, so we're hoping that they can mitigate any delays they have and finish on time. Poplar Road and Mountain View Road intersection improvements, this is up on northern end of Poplar Road, is an intersection, Mountain View. That's going to be re-advertised for construction. We've been meeting with purchasing here lately. That project should be out on the street in the next couple of weeks. Juggins Road, this is the new road into the new school off of, north of 610. That project's going to be advertised also as well as over the next couple of weeks. That project is scheduled to be complete about a month before the school needs to start moving in. We've worked with VDOT, we've created some incentives and disincentives, or liquidated damages for failure to complete, and some incentives for to complete early to make sure that road is complete by the time the schools move in. We believe we've got all the bases covered. We have a couple of Plan B and Plan Cs, so we're hoping all that works out.
Okay, Ms. Mauer?
I just got a couple of questions. The estimated budget that you're putting forth is that the entire amount that the county is contributing is at county VDOT with the matching funds money? Can you, can you clarify?
Yes, that's the, that 2.2 million dollars is the total budget. The prime, there's only two real funding sources for that. That is money from the schools and matching funds from VDOT.
Okay.
We're, we're actually just the administrator of the project on behalf of the schools.
If, can you go back to the Brook Road project for a second?
Yes.
So this projected amount for $9 million, is that all county money, that $9 million?
No, ma'am, there's, I'm not exactly sure the, the amount of funding from Smart Scale funding on that. I can get that number for you pretty quick, but no, that is, that is all funds, county funds are a portion of that, but not, it's probably a little bit less than 50%.
Okay, so just for the purposes of the public, it would be very helpful to know how much the county is contributing to these projects?
Okay.
So when you do the projected budget amount, how much the county is contributing, and how much VDOT is contributing? Because this particular project was, was very controversial, and if somebody thought that we originally contributed $2 million, and now it's $9 million, it would, it would start a storm.
We'd be happy to add that detail.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we'll do that on all the projects. I take it that's what, okay.
Yes.
Absolutely, we'll do that. The next one after, after Juggins is the intersection right outside the doors here with Route 1 and Courthouse Road. That is in right-of-way acquisition. We've made contact with, with everybody, making some progress, some, some, some difficulties, but I think we can work it all out. We're certainly going to work that way. We have noticed a project cost increase on this. It hasn't been finalized yet with VDOT, but it is something that's trending upward, and we're making adjustments in future CIP applications to make up for that. You'll find out more about that over the coming weeks. Berea Church Road, between Route 17 and Trustlow Road, that is, been in design for, for a while. We've done all the public hearings. We are getting ready to submit plans to VDOT. Matter of fact, I think they're going, either they went yesterday, or they're going today over for review, for final approval. The last phase of the Ferry Farm Trail, its staff has been directed to alter the design for that based on cutting the project a little bit short, so that is entered to the design phase. We should be coming forward with a, an early redesigned construction estimate, back to you, back to you pretty soon. Ferry Road and Route 3 improvements, that's a VDOT administered project at the intersection of Ferry Road and Route 3. That's going to be advertised in November. Onville Road Sidewalk Extension, we're in the design phase of that. We have design proposals, and we're trying to meet the scoping deadline of January, early February.
How, how long is that, that sidewalk?
1,600 feet, plus or minus.
For a million dollars?
Wow. How much of that funding is county money?
20%.
Yeah, that's really important.
Up to, up to 20%.
And that, that is just proves Wendy's point. You know, when, when people are asking a lot of questions about what we fund in the county, we definitely need to break that out for them, yeah.
There is a, a process, a complicated staged process that goes through multiple levels of state, and, and one of the programs that we participate in to get funding is a federal program. So there's two, two levels of oversight on that. We'd be happy to come back and, either at committee or in front of the board, to explain that process and give some more details on that if, if you'd need to.
Okay.
And honestly, I mean, the, the bottom line is, is how the public takes in information. So if they see $900,000 being spent on a 1,600-foot sidewalk, they're saying that 1,600-foot sidewalk is not more important than the turf field that I need over at Colonial Forge, Forge High School or whatever. So, so when the public kind of looks at this, but that $900,000 sidewalk is not really 900,000, it's up to 80,000, it, it makes a significant difference when we are making decisions, and so presenting that information to the public is critically important.
Point well taken.
It's not necessarily needing to know the intricacies of the process, it's making sure that the public knows what we're spending county money on, and we've made this decision instead of a different decision.
Okay.
Mr. Snellings?
Yeah, just a quick question for the public. What's driving that cost? That much money for 1,600 feet?
The process that we go through with VDOT for review follows the same process that a roadway project goes through. There's dedicated sets of drawings at various sets of completion rates, 10%, 30%, 90%. There are public hearings that go along with that. There are different types of drawings that are required in the plans for VDOT to review. There are environmental impact studies, things like that, that are all part of the process that require quite a bit of engineering upfront.
No land acquisition?
For this project, there, there is a little bit of land acquisition, a couple of private parcels, and then there's a future development parcel on the northern end that's, it's going to be on previously proffered property.
Have we worked out the details with that, on those proffers?
It has not been finalized yet.
Are we still getting resistance from the, the developer?
We submitted a bar, which is a, it's kind of an appraisal, and to my knowledge, we have not gotten any response back from the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
This slide shows the Smart Scale project applications that we were approved to submit during the last decision-making process. The four at the bottom, Enon Road, was a part of a previous Smart Scale application. We added three to that, the Winding Creek, Eskimo Hill, and the Stephanaque Mountain View intersection. Some projects that are non-transportation, I thought were important to note, Fire Station 14, if you've driven down Shelton Shop Road, you've seen, despite the weather, some significant progress on that project. They are dealing with weather delays. We're, we're confident that we can get the project finished within the, within the completion date, but we need to make some milestones here in the next month or so, and early part of next year, to make sure we can do that. Claiborne Run Sewer Interceptor, this is one of the utility's largest projects going on right now, but along Claiborne Run between Wawa and Earls is a very difficult project, dealing with the, the Claiborne Run Creek there, as well as CSX Railways, well, it's limited laydown area, a lot of things, but it's progressing nicely. Contractors doing good work, and so far, we're, we're working well with CSX, which can be, which can be a real challenge.
Yeah, that picture really doesn't do it justice. If you're ever crossing over the bridge there by, by Butler Road, take a peek over to the right, and it's a massive project.
That is the bore pit for a 60-inch pipe to go underneath the railroad tracks. The other project note that's a part of the program to support the downtown Stafford and Courthouse area redevelopment, the Lower Akikke Pump Station, which is a long series of force mains and gravity mains, and a new, a new pump station, that's going to be advertised in its entirety, or in two phases, part of it in December, or part of it in November, and part of it in either December or January. And that project will take about two years to complete once, once built, or once, once awarded. And last but not least, you've probably noticed the clearing in the wayside, a little bit down there from Coal Landing southward for about 2,000, 2,500 feet. That work is, they've laid a little bit of pipe, but as you can, as you probably know, the weather has really impacted them, but that project is underway. And that's all. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Council? Mr. Cohen?
Yes, very quickly, on the, the Ferry Farm Trail that's going down along River Road, I continually get questions from people, because it's always flooded, whenever we get rain. So are they taking into consideration the fact that that area is flooded when they, they put that in, and they, have they come up with some mitigation, so that people actually use that part? Because as you get close to the bridge, almost every day when I drive home, that I can actually drive on River Road, it's flooded, and there's nobody working, because it's flooded. So which makes me think that when they've paved it and put it in, it will be flooded.
If I understand your question correctly, it's, it's being constructed on the same topography as the existing land, so it will, it will be affected by the same waters that affect the road. Yes, yes, sir.
And anybody, any other questions? And maybe I missed it, the, the drilling under I-95 over off of Trustlow, was that on here?
No, ma'am.
Can you just give us a quick update on that?
The contract between the contractor and the county was severed, mutually, mutually severed. We have retained a new engineer to investigate technology types to, to complete the bore. Their reconnaissance work and survey work is complete, and they, they're putting pen to paper as we speak to, to create a set of bid documents for us to go back to work.
Okay.
We expect that work to be, to be complete by the summer. I think that's a very conservative estimate. I think we, we have the reality to do it in April or May.
Okay, great. All right, no other questions, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda minus number four?
So move?
Okay, any discussion? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Mrs. Mauer, item number four.
So I found item number four extremely interesting, that a lot of times I get complaints about the Virginia Department of Health on a regular basis. One area in which I receive a complaint from the Virginia Department of Health is that in trying to get permits for commercial facilities. So I have, I have heard from constituents that the Virginia Department of Health would give them an outdated code, and then when they come in for the inspection, that they based upon the outdated code, they get mad, because they weren't in compliance, and they show the code that the Virginia Department of Health handed to them. And, and, you know, they're like, well, that's not right. And, and so they give them a new code, and all of this delays the opening of our.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I could interrupt. This is actually item number six.
Oh.
And we pulled item number four.
Oh crud.
But you need.
I have item number six as.
There, there was an issue with the numbering on the agenda. I do apologize for that. It is number six.
Oh, okay. I have item number four on mine.
I have item number four on my agenda.
Madam Chair, the, the numbering started with the committees on one agenda, and probably shouldn't have. So it is actually item number six, which is the health.
Okay. So Ms. McLendon?
On the web.
I had every intention of pulling item number four, which is on the agenda, as printed as the Virginia Department of Health, as I had indicated. And it appears that in a corrected agenda, now listed as item number six. So am I, what are we doing here?
Supervisor Mauer, Madam Chairman, I would recommend taking the consent agenda vote again, and pulling the correctly, correctly numbered item.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Hollenberger, who approved the original consent?
I did.
Mrs. Mauer and Mr. Cohen seconded.
Oh, you made the motion to approve?
I made the motion.
Okay, okay. All right, so anybody opposed?
To starting over. Okay.
Okay. So I, thank you, Mr. Cavallier. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item number six.
Okay, for a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. Okay, please cast your vote to pull item number six from the consent. Motion carries. Ms. Mauer, item number six.
All right, so back to this particular item with the health department. So I have been told repeatedly that there was no control that we had over the health department, it was a state agency, that, that if they are slowing down our commercial developments, if they are allowing raw sewage to run onto a neighbor's lot, we have no recourse, because they are the state and autonomous. And then I find out, in this particular item, that we actually contribute 50% of their funding. And so for these services, and not only that, but if they get sued by any members in the performance of these services that we're funding, that according to this particular item, we're going to be covering their legal expenses. So what I'm wondering is if there's a possibility to add a required level of service for services that we are actually funding.
Madam Chair, I think that that's a complicated question, and we're going to need to come back to get the right answer on it. I think that the standard services is really what we're executing, but we do have the ability to do some more local services beyond the standard. Whether we can put conditions on the standard services is something we'd have to look into much more closely, I think, to answer that question. I understand the reason and motivation for your question, and we'll have to come back to give some more clarity to that.
Well, and I, I have to add that I concur with your thoughts. We just had a ribbon cutting for a pizza establishment in South Stafford, and after the bathroom was completely done, they made them tear it all out. And so, you know, things like that are costing our, our constituents, people that are trying to do business in Stafford County, money. And it could have all been completed properly, had they been notified in advance. all been completed properly had they been notified in advance. And that's just one example. I know of others that I could cite, but I won't. So I feel like we have an opportunity here to fix this. What's the will of the board?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to defer this item.
Okay. All right, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion to defer this item? Okay, cast.
What's the action coming back, and how long do we defer on it?
I will defer it to the next meeting to see if there is a potential to add some clauses for levels of service. And the Virginia Department of Health, on numerous occasions, has delayed the openings of commercial businesses because, i.e., they, they won't schedule inspections, they are requesting items that are not in accordance with federal code. There are a number of items, and more importantly, if we're covering their legal expenses, if they are asking for things that aren't in accordance with federal code, they're also exposing us to potential liability, which we then take on. So I would like to see that those negotiations included in this agreement-
Mr. Dudenheffer is just asking, when would we bring it back?
When are we going to bring it back? With what? I mean, it's changes to an MOU, or what are we, what are we expecting from staff?
Madam Chair, I think that we're going to have to bring back the parameters within which that agreement could be amended potentially to get at service quality and those kinds of things. The issue about legal expenses and what we specifically have some ability to change in terms of what we pay for, I think it is really not any question about who is in charge and regulates these areas, but I think we should bring some clarity back and figure out where there might be some options for us to do anything different. My understanding is that there's not much flexibility, but I don't want to state that as a point without doing some more research, and I think we can bring it back on the 27th and bring some clarity to it.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, no additional questions. Cast your vote, please. We're voting to defer it. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, on today's agenda, we have two items of unfinished business. The first item is considered as a code amendment requiring that drain fields be located on the lot that they serve. We did have a public hearing on this at our October 16th meeting. Mr. Harvey? Right. So we had a tie on this at our last meeting because we had one person that was So we are bringing this back, and we may vote on it?
Madam Chairman, your bylaw specifically states that the item will be heard anew. It gives the absent member a chance to hear the same information that the board heard the first time around. So staff has prepared a similar presentation, and they will answer additional questions that came up at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and board members.
Talk to me, Jeff.
This item was, as the chairman mentioned, was brought up on the October 16th meeting as a public hearing. There is also an ordinance 018-18 which would amend the utilities chapter of the code, dealing with what we call community drain fields. They're also known as alternative onsite septic systems, specifically large alternative onsite septic systems. Under state law, the large onsite systems serve three or more uses. The ordinance dealing with the subdivision amendment would apply to new subdivisions going forward. That proposed amendment basically would no longer permit community septic systems. The septic system would have to be on the lot that it's serving. The utilities code amendment did have some other changes to the community system, specifically looking at the treatment capacity and design capacity of those types of systems. At the last meeting, there was discussion about some attorney general's opinions and how they fit into these proposed amendments, as well as the state code. In consideration of the utilities amendment, 018-18, staff has decided to consider not pursuing the one amendment dealing with the capacity and also eliminating another reference to capacity requirements in our utilities code. That initial requirement, as well as the subsequent amendment, was based on our discussions with the health department and their concerns about the design of these systems and their viability should peak conditions occur during their operation. The utilities commission and planning commission looked at these amendments separately, and both bodies had recommended approval of the proposed changes. We have some additional information in the background report regarding the alternative systems that are located in the county. There was some question as if the health department knew of all the community drain fields and where they're located and their status in the county. Staff has looked into that and did not get a clear picture from the health department if they had a registry of those systems. Generally, the health department relies on self-reporting as far as maintenance, and that's reflective in the attachment in your background report. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have, Mr. Dudenheffer or other board members.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
What brought this up in the first place, Jeff? What was the problem that we're trying to fix?
Mr. Dudenheffer, my recollection was focused on our overall discussion about growth management in rural areas that first started. This was referred to the planning commission and utilities commission back in March of this year. At that point in time, the board was considering amendments to our cluster ordinance to further refine where they could be located, and the observation was that there had been a few new neighborhoods being proposed with community systems, and that possibly those neighborhoods were gaining more lots than you would have seen under conventional development, and that was a concern for the board at that point in time.
Wait, hang on, I think Mark has more.
Just let me just ask a few basic questions to get to a baseline for me, okay? The, is, if you have a community drain field for a development that doesn't have any kind of organization that is organized to manage that drain field and the possible effects of that, how is that handled as far as maintenance?
Mr. Dudenheffer, a community drain field would be located on common open space, so therefore, there would have to be a homeowners association established for that subdivision, and they'd be responsible for all their community open space, including the community drain field. As referenced in earlier discussion today, and there was a question at the last board meeting when this item was being heard, as to is there a possibility for the county to extend the state requirement that all community systems be run through essentially a public service or private utility? Our research has found that we cannot require it for subdivisions of less than 50 lots. So that was one issue. So the homeowners association could elect to hire any firm to maintain the systems. According to state law, they're supposed to have a licensed operator to operate them, and it would again be up to HOA to ensure that that's being done properly.
Have we had a problem that has generated from this, from having community drain fields, and what are they?
Mr. Dudenheffer, there has been a number of issues with community systems, and I may need to refer to Mr. Towery for the specifics. Most of those have been older systems, and can you add some additional information?
Sure, and I'll just qualify this by saying that these are issues that have been reported to us by the health department. There was, and I'm sorry, let me flip to it here, a list, an attachment for, this was at the time, a list of communities that were referred to us from the health department, and they've actually since expanded that list slightly. In, essentially, there were some of the older systems, which I believe would be referred to as a mass drain field technically, because it's a conventional drain field that serves, I believe it's over 1,000 gallons per day. Some of the older systems have experienced some issues, and in a few cases have had some failures. So in those specific cases, there was some question as to what could be done to make repairs to those systems. There have been at least one request to have the county come in and consider taking over or becoming more involved in the operation of a system that was outside of the service area. Since it was a private issue, we could not be involved in that.
So have we worked with any engineers, Jason, in looking at or working with them, helping them along the way with recommending a few engineers when they have repairs to their systems? Obviously, we can't say, you know, this is who I would hire, but here are some engineers in the field that do this line of work. Have we done that at all?
Sure. Typically, when these situations come up, we would refer them to the health department, and then I know that the health department has a comprehensive list of engineers that they often work with. And there have been some instances where we've, you know, said, here are some general engineers that we're aware of in the area.
Right. Okay, yes. Mr. Cavalier?
Jason, any of these older systems that have reported problems via the health department, are any of those systems the same technology or types that we would install now if a new drain field or a community drain field were built?
Mr. Cavalier, I'm not, I'm not familiar with all the particulars of each system. Generally speaking, I do know that the technology has developed quite a bit differently. And typically, when drain fields were installed 30 to 40 years ago, it was, it was a conventional style drain field similar to what I have at my own home, which is just a gravity-fed system. A lot of the technology now includes certain standards of pretreatment that occurs and before it's distributed to perhaps a drip system of some sort, or perhaps a conventional system. But the community systems now, once they, I believe the threshold is either, I believe it's 1,200 gallons, I'm going to say that, it's either 1,000 or 1,200, once it exceeds a certain design flow, it's actually required to go to alternative technology. So there is the possibility that you can still design conventional mass drain field systems, and those, those, if, once they go over 1,000 gallons per day, and I apologize because there's two different numbers, once it goes over 1,200 gallons per day, it becomes a large alternative onsite septic system. Once it goes over 1,000 gallons per day, on the conventional side, it becomes a mass drain field. So you, I'm sorry, I had to correct myself. You can still have both, but typically, the alternative systems are typically what's designed now for the larger systems.
I do have a degree in engineering too, so, you know, and I don't specifically know anything particular about drain fields, but it seems to me that if you can engineer a problem better now than you could 30, 40 years ago when these were done, you would do so. You, same way with cars. We don't have the same engineering on cars that we had 30, 40 years ago. And so, to me, I think the clear answer is no, they're not going to be designed to the specifications that they were then. And so I think that what we have here is an improvement in technology that may alleviate some of these problems that we had in the past, but, you know, we don't really know anything about future considerations until time passes. So, you know, it's a guess, but, you know, it's like anything else here we've been doing. And I think, I think in this case, we're throwing out the baby with the bathwater again, and, you know, we're not just focusing on the single issue and how to solve it. We're just completely throwing it out and coming up with a whole new plan, and that, to me, that's not a prudent way to do business.
Okay, Ms., let me go to Ms. Mauer, and then I'll come back to you.
So my concern is not whether or not the technology is good. With the alternative systems, they require, as you had alluded to, a significant amount of maintenance, a certified engineer. So who verifies that the maintenance is done, that these alternative systems, which, which require a lot of care and feeding, because there's a lot of technology associated with them, who requires that, that all of that stuff gets done?
The health department.
Okay, but I'm reading in the background report that the health department has about a 40% compliance rate.
That's what they reported, correct.
Okay, so if they have a 40% compliance rate, and it's because they don't have the staff to ensure that the technology is working appropriately, is there potential, if there's not, you know, adequate inspections, maintenance, insurance of these systems are operating appropriately, what does that mean for the risk of these systems?
Ms. Mauer, I would say that all, all systems will eventually fail. Anything that's designed could eventually fail. Certainly, proper operation and maintenance is absolutely needed to get the full service life out of any design system. So if it's not properly operated and maintained, it's likely that it would fail prematurely.
Okay, and so my next question is, is can we dictate as a county? Because my job is, is not to tell the health department what to do, although it looks like I give them 50% of their funding, but my job is not to tell the health department what to do. My job is to protect my citizens. And so if we're looking at a 40% compliance rate, and the health department, according to the background package, they don't have the staff to ensure adequate compliance with the required maintenance and inspection of these systems, to me, that, that, you know, increases the risk for the people that I've been elected to serve, which is the homeowner. Does Stafford County Utilities do any of these inspections or ensure that the, you know, that they're in compliance or the maintenance is being done?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Dudenheffer. Oh, Cindy, Ms. Shelton?
I'm going to talk about a lot of things that you didn't hear, Mr. Dudenheffer. So one of the things I wanted to talk-
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And so, because I'm trying to reiterate it, is when I was talking about them last time, I really focused on some of the really positive aspects of the mass drain fields, just to educate people. And one of them that I think is really important is that it's much better for the environment. And we're talking about the new systems. I also talked about, I think it was in 2016, could be wrong about the year because it's kind of at the end of 2015, beginning of January of 2016, is when the Commonwealth stepped in and said, you know what, we have to regulate these. We have to provide some regulations because we have failures and we need to have that. They also gave the information that these may cost more, and so we know that it may preclude some development because it's going to cost more, but we have to provide an alternative to those individuals who don't have choices. And so we can't just say that you're landed in Park and now it's not worth anything. We have all kinds of, we believe in personal property rights. And so that's one of the things that was compelling to me that the Virginia Department of Health stated was, we're going to require you to have professional engineers, we're going to require you to do these inspections, we're going to require you to meet this certain standard. And oh, by the way, with the new technology, we've already proven, and this is through the engineers in that study, that we can control nitrogen far better than we ever did with any conventional system, and even the individual alternative systems, which we're not talking about because we're really talking about the large ones. And so that was one thing. And then, one of the things that I really liked about it was that because you have those detailed-
Ms. Shelton, is this a question, or is this part of your comments later?
Yeah, there needs to be a motion on the floor.
Oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry.
Okay, but that's fine, that's fine. You're, you're very passionate about drain fields, but I just want to make sure we stay on task.
You're right, you're absolutely right. Thank you, ma'am, thank you for bringing me back. I'm so sorry.
Okay, do you have any questions for Mr. Towery or Mr. Harvey?
I do not.
Okay, all right, so we'll, all right, so let's see. Mr. Dudenheffer and then Mr. Schnelling.
Does, does the installation of a community drain field allow for more lots in a cluster subdivision? Is there a way that they can make that happen to where we end up with more homes?
Mr. Dudenheffer, the short answer is no. It doesn't allow for more homes than you could get under a conventional subdivision. Some of the discussion when we were looking at the cluster-approved areas and its applicability county-wide was, community drain fields were used in part to minimize trying to find a drain field in unsuitable soils, whereas a piece of property may have a substantial wetland area that could be part of the open space. a substantial wetland area that could be part of the open space, but couldn't support a drain field.
Which would lead to houses not necessarily being built, right? So...
Yes. And, and there is one case where there's a community drain field in Ms. Bomke's district. It's a 50-lot subdivision, almost all of the open space is a wetland. So, uh, under conventional development, they probably would've gotten half the lots that they achieved under the, you know, cluster development.
So this did allow for additional building?
In that particular case, yes.
That wouldn't ordinarily be done.
But that was a by right?
Yes. In, in all cases, we're talking about by right development.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Is it also driven by cost? I mean, is the, a community drain field in a cluster subdivision less expensive than having to do the individuals? And would they use a conventional old system, or would, if they had to do them on, uh, lots, would they, individual lots, would they use a newer system, just smaller?
Uh, Mr. Dudenheffer, I don't know the direct answer to that question, because they are somewhat different. With a community system, you have to design a series of force mains and gravity lines to go from the, the individual home septic tank to the shared system versus on, with the on-lot systems, you have a sewer line from the septic tank to your onsite system. So, with a, a community system, you tend to be building more sewer collection lines than you would with a, uh, individual onsite system.
So an onsite system knows, do they, if they were, if they had to come in and build a, a new home with a new sewer, with a, some type of a sewer system on it, would they use the new technology on that? Or would they be forced to use an older technology because it's smaller or not cost-effective? I mean, I, where's the, the line there?
Um, I guess I'll have to defer to Mr. Towery on some of that answer.
I, I'm not sure I understood the question. Can you say it one more time?
If, if I was gonna build a, a cluster subdivision and this ordinance was in effect, what, what type of system would I put on my lot? Would it be an older system that's more, at more, um, environmentally unsound, or would it be, even be a new system, just smaller?
So, just to make sure I understand the question, so you're saying if the ordinance were in effect, so that a community system were not, so that the, s- system had to be on the lot that it served? Correct. What type of system would they typically, it, it would honestly depend on the soils. And, um, it, it, it would vary by project. In some cases, you would have conventional, in some cases, you would have alternative.
Who, I, I get back to what Ms. Mauer says, that, that, and I guess some recent experience on some other areas kinda gets, bothers me in some of this, is that, um, mu- much of our stormwater issues we're experiencing in the county now were implemented 20 years ago. Um, and now we're here 20 years later, and we have these massive failures all over the place with no way to take care of how we're gonna fix these, these drainage pipes that were put in by developers and, and, uh, multiple issues that we're having. We're having homeowners who had no idea, they had these pipes under their houses, I mean, and they have HOA. So, it's just a, a matter of enforcement, to me, seems to be certainly an issue here. I, I, you know, I can't get away from, from the, the enforcement, and how do we make sure that we're not just, how do we know?
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, Mr. Snelling.
Uh, Jeff, let's get back to the regulation, the state regulation. Um, you indicated that the, the state of Virginia requires, if a subdivision has a community drain field with 50 or more homes, they have to come under state regulation. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, Mr. Snelling. Uh, Ms. McLendon, I remember we had a discussion about this, and I can't remember the, um, specific code citation and how it was worded. Do you recall?
I'm referring to the remarks you made just about 10 minutes ago.
Yes.
Uh, that's correct. That provision's actually set up by the Virginia Administrative Code.
So if, if, if a subdivision comes in at 49 homes, they don't have to worry about going under that code. Is that correct?
That, I believe that provision would not apply.
Would not apply. So, the responsibility for the maintenance would lie with, I guess, the HOA.
Yes, and they could choose to hire a firm, but they wouldn't be obligated to hire a firm to-
You mean the HOA could choose?
Correct.
Correct, but they wouldn't be obligated to.
Yes.
If they've got 49 homes, under state law. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay, so I, uh, Ms. Shelton?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I, I have a question. Um, I thought that, uh, the Virginia Department of Health required all alternative systems to be inspected, regardless of what size they are.
Um, Ms. Shelton, I understand that-
So my question is, I was reversing-
The Health Department does inspect during construction, but, um, I'm not aware if they do any post-construction inspections for, for operations and maintenance.
Yeah, I didn't mean it that way. I, I thought that the Virginia Department, let me try to form it into a question, back to the debate thing we went through. But, does the Virginia Department of Health require all alternative onsite systems to be inspected annually?
I believe that is correct.
The answer is yes, there is a requirement for that.
So it wouldn't matter whether it was one, or 49, or 500, they all have to be inspected annually according to their requirements?
There's a, yes, that's correct, there is a requirement.
Okay, thank you.
But if you have 50 or more homes, you have to have a utility?
I believe, I believe that's the correct distinction.
Is that correct, Ms. McLendon?
If the board would like more information, I would suggest us bringing information back. We don't actually have the code section in front of us. I believe that is a correct clarification, but we need to be 100% sure.
Okay, okay. Is it a true statement, Mr. Towery, that, um, and, and I believe Ms. Shelton alluded to this, that, um, the alternative systems are actually better for the environment? Um, and, and, or actually, I take that back, the community drain fields. You're using a lot less space, and they're better for the environment, and it would reduce Stafford County's TMDL, ti- total maximum daily load when it comes to our nitrogen. Is that an accurate or true statement?
Uh, Ms. Bomke, the, the Health Department does encourage the use of, um, the alternative, large alternative onsite sewage systems. Uh, they do report that they typically do result in better reductions in nitrogen, TSS, biological oxygen demand, things of that nature.
Okay. And the community drain fields take up a lot less space, correct?
I-
And that's what I've learned from the Health Department.
That's, I, I would believe that's correct. I'd be honest, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
But I believe that generally would probably be correct.
Okay. Um, so, and from what I've gathered, but I'd like to get your opinion, or maybe Mr. Harvey's as well, the alternative system, so if you've got a subdivision with 52 lots, and we have some that are conventional and some that are alternative systems, it's a lot more expensive, because not all the lots are gonna perk for the conventional, so that we may have some alternatives, correct? We have subdivisions where there's a, a mixture. The alternative systems are more expensive for the homeowner.
In terms of the operation and maintenance?
No, just the purchase of the alternative system is a more expensive system. So in some respects, we are, are, are homeowners in Stafford County, these are, homes are costing them more money because of the alternative systems, versus if they went to the community drain field for those subdivisions, it would be a lot more cost-effective for them.
I understand the question. I, I, I haven't done a, if you will, infrastructure analysis of the, of a, or done a cost comparison on, on construction, but I do understand the question. I could do some more research to-
Okay. So, um, and I just wanna bring this to the board's attention, that, um, President Trump and his staff actually just sent something out, um, for the National Onsite Wastewater Recycling Association, and it's about, um, decentralized technology, uh, these drain fields. So, and they're working with the EPA on these, and I don't know if you're aware of it, but, um, they, it's called the NOWRA Act, and they just put it into law. So, I, um, and this is a very complicated issue, you know, and I know just about this much, to be scary. You know, I don't even think I'd pass Community Drain Fields 101 at this point in time. But I guess I, I read all the information from the Utility Commission, I read all the questions and statements from the Planning Commission members, and I don't feel like they had the information that we have here today, and what we had at our meeting on October 16th, in front of them when they voted on this. Now that's just my personal opinion, because there's a lot to this, and I'm just-
I know, sure.
Yeah, it is a question. It's a statement.
I was gonna go there.
Would you? Would you agree? Okay. So with that, thank you very much, colleagues. Um, so I'll bring it back. Thank you, Mr. Towery. Uh, Mr. Snelling.
Mr. Towery. Um, folks that have a, a drain field at their home, you send them a notice every year, is that correct? Every five years to have it pumped?
For the conventional systems, yes.
And they have to prove it?
Yes.
Correct? If we've got a community drain field in a community with no HOA, and believe me, we have them, I've got subdivisions in my district that have no HOA, they started with HOA, it went defunct, who do you send the notice to? That's my point right there.
No, wait.
There's nowhere to send it.
Are these community drain fields?
A community drain fi- if there's a community drain field, and there is no HOA, there's nobody responsible for it, who do you send the notice to? We don't know. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Dudenheffer.
If, so over 50 homes, they're required to have a whole bunch of oversight, they're required to have an, you know, external utility, I mean, there's all kinds of oversight. But less than 50, there isn't any significant oversight. So is that the reason why so many cluster or, cluster developments rush to subdivide their property to where they're gonna build less than 50 homes?
Um, Mr. Dudenheffer, um, the majority of our cluster subdivisions that we've seen do not have community septic systems. There are two that have been approved, there was two others that were proposed, but they are now outside the cluster-approved area and have been, uh, not, they've been denied, not approved.
Except the one cluster that was approved in my district.
Yes, is, there's one in your district that's under construction.
And I was just informed yesterday, they will be contracting with a private utility, and it's 50-
50 lots.
Yeah, 50 lots.
And there's also one in Mr. Snelling's district that's under construction.
Correct.
Uh, no, I believe it's, um, uh, yep.
Then why do they, why is there this, this effort to make sure you get below 50 lots on these cluster developments? What is the advantage to them for doing that?
Well, Mr. Dudenheffer, that's a different part of the, um, equation, dealing with our subdivision ordinance and state law. Uh, state law, um, passed in 2014, no longer allow localities to require a preliminary subdivision plan, uh, for subdivisions of, of 50 or fewer lots. So, several developers have taken their large tracts of land and broken their properties into two separate subdivisions to avoid, uh, the process of going to the Planning Commission for approval of a preliminary subdivision plan. The preliminary subdivision plan process adds cost and time for the developer.
But more controls by the county?
Not necessarily. It's, um, but it does, it's an added, uh, step in the approval process.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes, just a couple of quick questions. Is it possible for staff to develop a protocol? I mean, we have it, comma, uh, we have, basically, this seems to be the issue, is the old ones, which are failing, and the new ones, which may be using new technology with, and/or they're going to these utilities. So is it possible to come up with a protocol for the old ones and for the new ones, for staff to come forward with that and bring that to us, to say that this is what we're gonna be doing? To sort of deal with your question, and Mr. Snelling's question of, what do we do with these people that the HOAs died, and we have no one to go to? You know, I'm, I, basically, it seems to be, one concern is we have nothing there as a protocol to deal with the bad ones. It's just sort of like out there that the HOAs have to hopefully deal with it. And I'm just curious, is it possible for you to come up with a protocol that we can follow to address that?
Well, Mr. Cohen, if I understand your question correctly, the subdivision ordinance really wouldn't, uh, be affected by the question of how we treat the different types of systems.
Right.
Because the question before, the board with the subdivision ordinance is, do you wanna allow them or not?
Right. So, but I mean, so for Jason, is there some way we can deal with that aspect? I'm just trying to find a, if there's a way to deal with the problem, rather than just where we are. Because it's, this isn't gonna help anything in the back end of this, it's only gonna help the ones in the future.
Sure. Um, so, we can certainly continue to work with the Health Department to understand the locations of systems that are failing, um, and try to develop approaches. I would say each one is gonna be unique. Um, is that-
Yeah. No, I mean, that's, that's, it answers my question, thank you.
So is this a legislative priority that we should've put in for this year to move the Health Department down that road and coming up with, um, what do you call them?
Enforcement?
Enforcement.
Levels of service.
Levels of service, thank you. Because I, I'm just not in the position, I think there are some benefits of the community drain fields, and so I, I, I'm just not willing to say, no more community drain fields. And, so anyway, it's not a question, thank you. Um, any other questions? Ms. Mauer?
To, to help clarify Mr. Cohen's, um, uh, question, is can we require the, um, the, the developers of these community drain fields to put together some sort of structure in which they have to report to the county, um, the status of these community drain fields, or is that in violation of the Attorney General, um, opinion that we had looked at?
Um, Ms. Mauer, I, in terms of the initial requirements, I, I'm not sure of the answer to that question. I am familiar in our discussions with Loudoun County, um, that they have a, a, a section of code that they've spent quite a bit of time developing over the last 10 years, as well as a team of, I believe, four to five individuals who go and spend quite a bit of time working with the operators, verifying what's going on in the field, and trying to, there, there's a, a system of fines and penalties and a reporting structure that Loudoun County has developed, that they found to be very, very beneficial, um, in trying to control these kinds of situations. So, there is at least an example there that the board could consider, uh, but that, of course, would-
What is the budget? How much does a county spend in order to inspect and, uh, manage the community drain fields in Loudoun County?
I'm not, I'm not sure what their budget is. They have, I believe it's five individuals.
Five individuals? So if we were to hire four or five individuals to provide that same service, what would that cost us here?
I could get back to you with some numbers on that.
Half a million dollars, roughly? Usually an FTE is $100,000?
Yeah, I, I think it would, it would be half a million at a minimum.
Okay. So, so if, if we wanted to, you know, allow the developers, we could take on the protection of our citizens with an added cost?
The, the additional enforcement could be done, uh, in, well, let me back that up for just a minute.
Yeah, because according to everything that I'm reading, and that Attorney General, um, position that Ms. Shelton so very kindly provided, um, at our last meeting, which it, I mean, solidifies my position on this even more, is that we can't require any requirements outside a state code, that that is fully up to the Virginia Department of Health.
Yes, and I, I would say that my understanding is with Loudoun County, that their personnel are essentially performing the enforcement function.
Okay. Interesting.
Mr. Cavalier.
Do we have the data on how many of these community drain fields have officially gone bad, and we've had to do, put in serious money to repair them? And versus how many individual lot drain fields that we've had go bad in the county that we've had to either repair or, you know, put on the pump and haul program that we have?
Uh, Mr. Cavalier, we've been unable to get a comprehensive list from the Health Department of all of these, um, community systems. So we, we do not have that data of where, where all these systems are. Of the, um, six that were originally listed, I believe- I believe, two to three of them were in some state of disrepair and/or failure.
And I think, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I heard you say earlier that all the new subdivisions with these drain fields clustered regularly are required to have an HOA, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Cavalier.
All right. And I know we can't do anything about the failure of HOA. Sometimes they happen. And... But I think with that new requirement that you must have an HOA in these places that are going to have community drain fields, I mean, I think we're talking about such a small number of instances where the community drain field is going to fail and, oh, by the way, the HOA went defunct, too. So you have... That has to be the perfect storm to happen for us to be any ways, shape, or form liable, or not even liable, but asked to come in and provide assistance for these things. And so I don't see where, you know, we're solving a... I don't see where we're solving a big problem here. I think we're going after a small piece.
Mr. Snell... Oh. Ms. Mauer.
You just said something, Mr. Towery, that really concerns me. You said, "We can't get a comprehensive list of all of these alternative systems." That they don't have a comprehensive list of all the alternative systems that are scattered throughout Stafford County. If they don't have a comprehensive list of all of these magical alternative systems that are so much better, that are scattered throughout Stafford County, how in the world are they enforcing the annual inspection requirement?
Ms. Mauer, as I understand it, in 2004, the Health Department was given the initial authority to begin enforcing annual maintenance and inspections. It wasn't until 2011 that they were allowed to collect or actually receive reports or enforce the ability to receive reports. So my understanding from talking with the Health Department is that they are in the process of developing a system to gather that information and data and then look at how to... Kind of next steps on how to begin looking at enforcement.
And historically, because we have some alternative systems here in Stafford County, how much enforcement are they doing to ensure the proper maintenance and operation of these systems?
My understanding is that it's been very little.
Okay. So little to no enforcement of the regulations and all of the requirements and everything that people are supposed to do?
It's my understanding from...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Shelton.
I have one more question. If I had land that didn't park, whether I'm in a large development and it... I can't do it. There are counties... Entire counties in Virginia who don't park. And so if I had land like that and I couldn't put in a conventional system, what would I do?
Well, Ms. Shelton, there are various alternative systems out there for... To help in situations where soils are either marginal or problematic. And then I know that in certain conditions, you could potentially move to a surface discharge system.
A surface discharge system isn't the same as an AOSS?
No. A surface discharge system is something that is regulated by the department... By DEQ. So, for example, a surface discharge would actually discharge to perhaps a ditch or a creek of some sort after going through some form of treatment at the facility. And I believe that surface discharge systems under... Over 1,000 gallons per day are regulated by DEQ. And surface discharge systems under 1,000 gallons per day, which would be most of your single-family uses, still remain the monitoring... The permit is a DEQ permit, but the monitoring and compliance is with the Department of Health.
Okay. Thank you.
So with no other questions, I would just like to say, you know, there... We have a lot of questions in my mind that still need to be answered. There seems to be more research that we need to do as a board. I feel that... I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't feel we're really in a position to vote on this, that they're just... And have we sat down and talked to our building community? Have we... Do we have their opinion on this? What kind of research have they done? You know, I feel like there's a tremendous amount of technology out there that we have at our fingertips. And are we using that? I guess I go back to kind of what Jack said earlier. I'm not willing to throw the baby out with the bathwater. But that's my opinion. Yep. Is there a motion?
Yes, ma'am. My motion to approve proposed ordinance 018-17.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I guess this would be for your time, Ms. Shelton.
Yeah, I was going to make a secondary motion to defer, to send this back to the Planning Commission to get our additional questions answered.
Point of clarification. It's not actually a motion to defer. It would be a motion to send it back to the Planning Commission.
And it would be a substitute motion?
That's correct. And it requires a second.
Okay. Would you restate your motion, please, Ms. Shelton?
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we send this to the Planning Commission to answer many questions that we have because I think that we brought forward many of the issues that were not addressed at the Planning Commission level.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second? Can I second it? Okay, I'll second it. Okay. A motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this deferral? Okay. Cast your vote to defer.
My one question was this, is that this is a continuation of a previous vote. So we're not tied to vote on that because of the absence?
No, this item is coming back to the Board of News, so none of the previous votes count. And I want to note one more time, this is not a motion to defer. It's a motion to send 018-17 to the Planning Commission.
Right. To send this back to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
For its review and to hold a public hearing.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Motion to send this back to the Planning Commission. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Okay. That motion fails. Okay. That motion fails.
So original motion is back on the floor, Madam Chair?
Okay. Original motion is back on the floor. Can you restate your motion, please?
Motion to approve proposed ordinance 018-17.
Okay. All right. A motion and a second. Any other... Just any discussion?
Madam Chair. I'll have to... Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mr. Cohen. No?
All right.
All right. I'll do it quickly. Several things. Number one, this is... And I asked Mr. Harvey to help check on this, but this isn't as large of an issue in my district, but I know it is in other people's district. We had one area that theoretically could be done with this, and they're not doing residential. They want to do business. So it's not really a major issue to me, and I tend to defer to the people who, if it's in their district, it's more an issue. The technology, I know there is good new technology out there. Way back when I was on the Plan Ag Commission, there was the University of Tennessee came up with a process that you could do a community on a small septic system. And it seemed to be pretty good. And I bothered Ms. Baker and Mr. Harvey on that. So there is a lot of technology out there that makes it worthwhile. And I'm always big on trying to preserve our rural character. And quite honestly, and this is sort of... Two things are making me vote the way I'm going to ultimately vote. One is that our discussion of the stormwater issue today, which is, we don't have a mechanism in place to deal with things when they fail. And then we get stuck with it. And I get very concerned about the fact that... And I was trying to stress this. We have two problems, the older systems and the newer systems. But I don't know that we have a protocol. That's why I wanted to defer it, so that we could send it back, in due respect, to the Planning Commission to come up with an actual system to deal with this rather than just doing something. My big concern is that this is... And I know where several people are coming from. This will cause there to be less growth outside our urban service area, which would protect our open space. And everybody knows where I stand on doing that. And I... So I will vote on this, in favor of this, because I do not want draconian measures that may... Other people may say that will harm people more so. So I will do this on step that... Doing this minor step, which, as Mr. Cavalier says, only affects a small number of units, a small type of thing, because I'm really leery of other measures that are going to be more draconian. And I do not like that. I do not like the idea of penalizing everybody for various rights. So I will reluctantly do this. I hope staff will reach out to the various communities on technology and come back to us with a protocol and a procedure because I think we need to come up with a plan for what do we do with the failing ones? And then if the newer ones are not failing, are not having a problem, come back and say, this is where the situation is. And I strongly wish that we could have sent this back for that. But unfortunately, that didn't pass. So if I'm forced with this, I will defer, in my opinion, to the people who are being impacted. But it... To me, this is... If I'm looking at something that's going to be a severe measure and something that's not as severe, I'm going to go out on a limb here and go for this in hopes that the people will not go out and savage individuals in the rural area in the future.
Okay. Ms. Mauer.
So this isn't necessarily a community drain field issue. This is a land use issue. And to your point, Mr. Cohen, about community drain fields being... Or mass drain fields being utilized for businesses, the land use decision we're talking about is the lot in which it served. So if the drain field is on the lot in which it served, your business will not be affected by this. So it's not necessarily the size, but whether or not we're protecting the actual residents and what risk we're affording the residents. And I agree. All sorts of technology out there. Great technology. Wonderful technology. But technology is only as good as it is maintained, it is inspected, and the regulations are enforced. And unless and until we have some sort of enforcement mechanism to ensure that it is maintained, it is inspected, and people are actually being fined for failing to do what they're supposed to do. And we, as a county, are relying upon the Virginia Department of Health doing that. And the Virginia Department of Health, getting back to my previous issue, is admittedly not enforcing the inspections. They don't even know where half the alternative drain fields are, which concerns me. And they're not enforcing the maintenance. And so I need to look at it from a perspective of, as a homeowner, this is the most important investment that they're going to make. And do I want them relying on an HOA in order to ensure that the protection of their property is safe? Or do I want those individuals to have the power to protect their own onsite sewage system on their lot? And unless and until I can tell them that you are good and I can't, then I want their drain fields on their lot where they have control and they can protect the most important investment that they're going to make for the rest of their life. And so I'm going to be supporting this motion. And thank you very much.
Ms. Shelton.
Thank you. I can't support this because I can't devalue someone's land because they can't... They have no alternative systems. And so related to that, and we kind of walked around this a little bit, but the Virginia code, and specifically 15.2.2157, you guys go look it up. It very specifically says that a locality cannot prohibit the use of an alternate onsite system where there's no sewage or sewage disposal available. So if I were to pass this, then I would be flat out telling people, I'm sorry, you just can't build on your land. And somehow that seems to violate the Dillon Rule or feel like it. So I'm not going to support this. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Snellings.
Thank you. I don't have a problem with the technology. I'm sure that the board had said here 30 years ago, didn't have a problem with that technology. I'm sure this technology is wonderful, and I think it's going to do great things out there. But here's where I have a problem. This is a subdivision of the general plan for Rivers Bluff. 56 homes in my district. It's called Rivers Bluff because it sits next to the Rappahannock River. Pretty close. But they're not going to do 56 homes. So they're going to start with Phase 1, which is 49 homes, and Phase 2 will be 6 homes. Why are they doing that? Because they can usurp the regulation. I can't take a chance that an HOA is going to be there and maintain 56-home drain field next to the Rappahannock River. I can't do that. I can't depend on the Health Department. We've already heard from Ms. Mauer and from staff. They don't even know where these things are. So it's for that reason I have got to vote for this ordinance. Because I can tell you, folks, 30 years from now, when my bones are bleaching in the grave, there's going to be somebody else sitting in this seat and say, I wonder what that guy was thinking when he allowed this to happen, and now we got to deal with it. It's going to happen. So for that reason, I'm voting in favor of the ordinance.
Okay. Ms. Shelton, you had some other things that you wanted to say. Do you have any of those when you were asking questions?
Madam Chairman, I think I said enough.
Okay.
And I... Because I really do feel that we're going to violate the law. And I think that we do that too many times in not realizing that we're doing so. And just like the cluster ordinance, I still feel very strongly... I've talked to staff. I've talked to legal. I've talked to the Planning Commission. I've listened to things. I've talked to the Virginia Department of Health. And I've talked to the State Corporation Commission. And I... If we are in that position, then I'm like, if I'm being pushed to do that, I got to go. So that's it.
And I've got to respond to that.
All right. Last comment.
Yeah. I just have to respond to that because when we're starting talking about violating the law, we can't, which gets back to the original argument, regulate whether or not an alternative system is used. So, Ms. Shelton, if there is a private landowner who wants to put an alternative system on their property, go forward and put an alternative system on their property. We're not controlling that. What we're saying is, is whether or not those alternative systems can be on community property or whether or not those alternative systems can... Must be on the lot in which they serve. That is what we're voting on. That is the ordinance change that we are making. That is a land use decision. It is not telling anybody that they can't use an alternative system. And what it is saying, Ms. Shelton, is that they might not be able to subdivide and put one to serve 49 homes because the systems must be on the lot in which they serve. So I want to make that point very clear.
Okay. I think everybody's had their chance. I personally like community drain fields, but I am going to support this ordinance because... For the reasons you just stated. Enough's been said. But I think that... I wish we had regulations from the Department of Health to help us in this whole process. All right. So cast your vote for 018-17. Tally the vote. Okay. Motion passes 5 to 2. Correct. Me. Okay. The next item is ordinance 018-18.
Madam Chairman, a motion for approval of proposed ordinance 018-18.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Yep. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes five to two. Okay, uh, with that, we are now going to move on to, um, item number, well, I have fifteen, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, item number seventeen, County Administration authorized the Board of Supervisors' vision statement and strategic plan. Proposed Resolution R eighteen dash two sixty-two.
Do we want to do this after?
Yeah, we can do whatever you want in essence of time. This would be the one item that would be easiest.
Okay, let's, um, if the board, uh, if the board can sit tight here, I think what we might do is move the other two items under new business. We could move those, um, after our public hearings, or... Or we could move them to the next meeting.
We can do that for twenty minutes.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and move forward with this next one. We have proposed Resolution R eighteen dash two sixty-two.
Madam Chair, the, uh, the matter being the strategic plan, you'd like to move forward with that?
No, 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 we're not deferring that one.
Oh, okay.
We're, we're, we're talking about item number seventeen now, the strategic plan and vision statement.
Madam Chair, this item was reviewed with you at the last meeting. It is the result of your work in a retreat, uh, in, in June. Based on the clear direction that you gave about a set of priorities and a vision, we did do some tweaking of the language to get it as clear as possible and actionable. And, um, I have spoken with all of you, um, since the last meeting to get any major changes or things that you had there, and, um, there wasn't much feedback that I got, but this is the opportunity, if there's some changes you think are necessary, um, we would like to get this adopted so that we can then move on to, uh, work plans and incorporate this into the budget process coming up. So, uh, since I have covered this before, and you've had a couple of meetings to look at it, I will withhold any more comments and just turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, any discussion on our strategic plan? Okay, uh, with that, I have a motion and a second, no further questions or discussion, cast your vote. Tally the vote, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you to you and the staff for all your work on that. I think that's going to be very, uh, uh, very important as we move forward this coming year and the, and the many years thereafter. Okay, um, is the board, does the board want to, we've got fifteen minutes before our work session, do you want to move forward with item sixteen and push seventeen, well seventeen, or nineteen, we're going to be talking about at our work session?
I think we could do both of those at the work session, and it'll be very brief, since you've seen the overview presentation, we'll be able to get into the work session.
Madam Chair, if I can just ask, so, so this transportation methodology that, that we're looking at, I would like to see that come back at the seven o'clock meeting. It, it's, it's, it's the result of a considerable amount of work, and quite frankly, we promoted it so much at the chamber event that we went to today, that, um, if, if Mr. Dayton, I know, are you willing to come back?
What?
Yes, of course.
Okay, I, I would like some time to present this to the public, because this is critically important, and it's one of the number one issues that we talk about.
Okay, um, what is the will of the board?
I think, I agree it is critical, but I, I firmly believe we need to bring it back at our next meeting afternoon, so we'll have more time to discuss it. If we do it tonight, we've got a long closed session, we've got two public hearings, I'm afraid we're all going to get a little weary before the night's out, so. I, I suggest, I suggest we bring it back on the twenty-seventh.
I, I, I will, I'm okay with that.
Okay, all right, with that, then, we will bring it back. Keith is smiling. Um, okay, so with that, we will adjourn, or no, well, we've got closed session, yeah. Okay, so let's, um, Mr. Snellings, if you could read us into closed session, please.
Whereas the board decides to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual litigation, Stafford County versus SafeCo and related consolidated cases, whereas pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A five and A seven, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. So moves.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Cast your vote to go into closed session on that item. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously, we're in closed session, thank you. Motion and a second, any discussion? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously, our meeting is adjourned until seven o'clock, thank you.
Is it adjourned if we're doing the work session?
Oh, our, our meeting?
Whoa.
It's a work session.
It's not being open, it's happening.
I think you were just moving the meeting to work session.
Oh, we need to, where's our?
We're back on.
Oh. Uh, our meeting is continuing up into the ABC, uh, room for a work session. Thank you.
I know I'm driving you crazy, no, you're kicking me on the ass.
Room, and now we're going to move into our seven o'clock meeting. Tonight, we're going to stand, and we typically do a prayer at our meetings, but we are going to have a moment of silence, if you would please stand, for all those that have lost their lives in tragic events due to our continued violence in this country, and we need to pray that somehow we change the course of things that are happening. Please bow your heads in a moment of silence. Thank you. And now Mr. Snellings will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So first, we will have, uh, presentations by the public. If you would like to comment, please remain courteous and respectful to members of the audience and to the board. We're here, um, if you're here to speak about one of this evening's public hearings, if you would please, uh, hold your comments until that public hearing has been opened. Each speaker, it is allowed three minutes, please speak slowly and clearly into the microphone, and begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor your time. Green indicates the start of your remarks, yellow indicates you have one minute, and red obviously means that your time, uh, is up. So at this point in time, I do have two speaker cards, and we'll go in order. The first one is, uh, Bill Hoyt.
Good evening, uh, my name is William Hoyt, I live at four hundred Windermere Drive. I don't know if this is anywhere on your agenda this evening, but I'm coming to you all with a possible solution for some of the ongoing flooding problems you've been having out on Brook Road. Uh, I own four hundred Windermere Drive. My property backs up to the back end of Poplar Hills. Before Windermere and Poplar Hills were ever developed, they used to have some pretty substantial logging roads through that area, um, uh, when they were, you know, logging all that acreage. And there are currently two logging roads that run almost exactly from the edge of my property on Windermere Drive to the very end of Poplar Hills. I mean, they're there, twenty to thirty foot wide each, one's higher than the, the other one by about, you know, two to three feet, until they converge there at the back. They were designed to carry way back in the day, I mean, enormous loads, incredible weight, because you're basically hauling out fifteen, twenty, thirty trees on the back of these huge trucks. In my estimation, it would be a piece of cake for the county VDOT or, or some manifestation to clean up, uh, use, blend together those two substantial logging roads, which basically tie in Windermere Drive to the back of Poplar Hills. Ninety percent of the work is already done. I mean, I've walked it with, uh, with people from the Brook Fire Department, from Concerned Neighbors, and, you know, other than taking down some trash trees, which I've gone over, and, and doing a little bit of grading, I mean, literally, it's ninety percent done. You would need some dirt and some gravel, you'd need to do some grading and some, some other minor site work, but it's truly minimal in scope. Chief Langford from Company Five, where I used to volunteer, and I have walked it on a, on a number of occasions, we even set up a, a volunteer weekend where we had some firefighters from Company Five coming down with some chainsaws and some skid steers, and we were going to do, kind of, the, the work, you know, by ourselves unofficially, and, uh, kind of do everything kind of as a bit of a handshake. Creating a cut through from Windermere Drive to Poplar Hills would create for a detour around the worst of the flooding right now, which is kind of the S curve, um, that's going to be east of where Raven Road is. Uh, it would also shave a couple of minutes off your fire EMS and, and law enforcement response times to the back end of Poplar Hills. I mean, I first proposed this to, to Chief Langford way back in the day when there was a cardiac incident, and people almost didn't make it in time. Uh, I would propose that this access road be set up kind of like the, uh, the back gate there in Akwaa Harbor, you know, dirt, gravel, grade it, and put two gates, they're basically managed by transponders, one on each side. So that way, fire EMS or Leo, they get close, they hit the, hit the, the button, transponder goes up, they go back and forth, no harm, no foul. If there's a problem with flooding, people can't get through, people are trapped on, on either side of that horrible S curve, VDOT, Stafford County Fire EMS, or call us, we'll go out, we'll hit the button, I don't care, we'll open it up, and it allows a way for people to get in and out of Marlboro Point and that, and that eastern portion of Brook Road without having to get washed away, and not just because of the flooding, but at some point, you're going to end up having, you know, that road get eaten away. Again, so gates and transponders, EMS, fire, rescue, and again, I've been known to stir the pot occasionally, I, I have no problem doing that, and I was...
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
I'm sorry, um, so, I'm prepared to get, to do it and to, and to kind of create a, a fire egress point, because Windermere Drive's a, a, a dead end, but to make this thing be official and legit, the county really needs to get involved on some level, whether it's a, a taking, a condemnation, or whatever, um, but, I can't grant an easement to a private person, but there's nothing that prevents the, the county from doing some kind of a limited or temporary taking, that gives you a, a quick term, a quick solution for what's going to be a longer-term repair and improvement problem on Brook Road.
Okay.
For what it's worth.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, the next speaker card is Brandy Quirk.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. My name is Brandy Quirk, I reside at one three two Stableside Lane in the George Washington District. I'm here to talk about rebuilding Ferry Farm Elementary School. We, the community, wanted to understand how a rebuild went to renovation in two short months from the time that we met at the import forum on March eighth of twenty eighteen. The documents I have found showing the costs don't add up. We've gone from a twenty-five point five million figure with an open date of twenty twenty to a thirty-eight point three million figure with an open date of twenty twenty-four. And if we waited another decade, it would cost forty-six point thirty-eight million dollars. We want a more thorough explanation with full transparency and complete accountability for these figures. How is it that we are not provided with more details of where these numbers are coming from and how they are and were collected? Are there any actual metrics to, that can qualify and quantify these figures? We also want to better understand, if a renovation was what the school board and the Board of Supervisors wanted, then how is it that I'm hearing the proposed twenty twenty-seven opening date for Phase Two renovation went from costing four point five to six point nine million dollars? Let's not forget that during the course of twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, Ferry Farm's draft CIP shows infrastructure totaling four point six million dollars. This includes, to name a few, replacing a roof, I say rebuilt. Replace the walk-in freezer and refrigerator, I say rebuilt. Repair mechanical systems, I say rebuilt. Replace a generator, I say rebuilt. On October ninth, the Assistant Superintendent for Operations told me, a school age is out at fifty years. Ferry Farm Elementary is sixty-one years old, is the oldest elementary school in the county, and the only school in the George Washington District. On July twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-seven, Grimmon Parker presented the schematic design plans for Moncur. I called to get a better understanding of why Ferry Farm was included in that presentation. They told me, I quote, "Developing a proto," the school board asked to proto, develop a prototype, design of the school would fit on several locations." I wanted to better understand why Ferry Farm was identified and not all the several locations. And they said, I quote, "We were asked to particularly look at Moncur and Ferry Farm Elementary." Per GMP, I quote, "In the, in the, in the presentation, uh, we tested the design there, and the design fits there nicely." As a presentation also says, "The schematic design services, GMP studied the Ferry Farm site, the prototype design would be a good fit as part of a phase-occupied site condition." How much did that work cost, and why was it done if only eight months later, plans for Ferry Farm was becoming a renovation, and the word rebuild was out of the question? Why don't we start with the survey and design of the foundation?
Can you wrap your comments up, please?
What gives, what's next? Where's the full transparency and complete accountability? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else, uh, in the board chambers would like to address the board, please come forward?
This is my first public speech of the evening. I want thirty-two minutes, just like they got. Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane, they all got extra three minutes. I won't get distracted from the previous, uh, speakers like I did this afternoon. Just so you know, you want to call VDOT, that's very dumb on transportation. I already reported the flooding at Shelton Shop Road, so we're going to see what's happened. I brought that. You brought up the key matrix, you brought it to the wrong board, my dear, they don't know what a matrix is. And even though you brought opportunities here, they think everything is an issue. Just so you know, sixty-one years old for a school is, it's just a baby. They're, uh, designed to last a hundred years, go to the Alvin Bandy Complex. Uh, you know, the Falmouth District, the town of Falmouth, they tore down a thirty-nine million dollar, uh, building, so, um, I think someone used to walk the school there, uh, at one time. I like to laugh at things. You know, I was at Ferry Farm yesterday, and, um, the reason I was there is because of gerrymandering. And this district is gerrymandering, it shouldn't be named George Washington, it should be named Gerrymandering, Washington. And the other thing I found out from the gerrymandering of twenty-eleven is the Porter Library, what a joke that is for voters. I went to all of them in the gerrymandered Garrisonville District yesterday. What about Park Ridge Elementary, where you have actual parking? What a concept. But I can't remember that one, I really don't know. I only know the churches exec, exist, uh, at Moncur, and I've told you before, there's a big movement in this country that you don't have nonprofit organizations using our public utilities. They are using our resources, and that includes the parking lots, the lights turned on, the guy who's got the key to let you in, you know how it is, I know you're all good church, church-loving people, read Colossians two eight, beware of the philosophies of men and not of things according to Christ, I don't have to write that one down, I already know it. Now, uh, going to the Akwaa District, I saw a courthouse had, uh, some potholes, so I'll take care of those, as well as the dead animals that are out there. So, as you know, I try to go to every district to take care of everything, and then maybe when I'm long gone and dead, you can make a proclamation in my name.
Okay, uh, would anyone else like to address the board? Please come up.
Glenn Patterson, H. Skywood Court, Rock Hill District, and believe it or not, I'm actually going to be briefed tonight. I just want to congratulate Mr. Cohen on his win yesterday in the election, and I want to thank Ms. Bomke for being out there all day yesterday in the pouring rain with me, and I hope you've dried out by now, I finally did last night. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening, board. My name is, uh, Phil Stevenson, I'm at ninety-one Royal Crescent Way in, uh, Mr. Snellings' district. Um, I'm here tonight to ask you to take a bigger look at some of the things that have been really hitting our national news, and before they take a toll in this area. Uh, one of the things I'm asking is, is to take a look at the school bus systems and how those systems catch the red light runners. systems catch the red light runners. I'm a commuter, just like many people in this room here. I commute to DC every day, and I take a lot of these side roads just to get to some of these commuter lots. On those lots, or excuse me, on those roads, I follow behind many buses, just as many people in this room do. And I constantly, every day, red light runners. And some of those roads don't have room for the Sheriff's Department to go after those runners. I don't see the Sheriff's Department out there very much, not a dig at them. Obviously, they're doing everything they can to combat that. I'm just asking that this board get more involved into the systems with the school board, with the state attorney, Mr. Cavalier. I thank you for your email this week, engaging with the Commonwealth Attorney and going on from there. We just, before we show up in the national news, the spotlight, like Indiana, Pennsylvania, Florida have this over this last month, and kind of been overrun by the elections and those things have con to the side, we need to bring those back to light before they become a bigger issue in our area. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board?
Hi, my name is Andrew Mungin, 2770 Brook Road in Aquia District. I'm here after the last roundtable that Cindy hosted for everybody in the community to come out. We were fortunate enough that Delegate Thomas came, and he mentioned something that I think is a lot of a concern to people in Hartwood and in Aquia District, and that is rural internet and telecommunications infrastructure. My understanding, based on what Delegate Thomas said, is that there is currently a consideration of a grant application that the county's looking at submitting to Richmond. And I would just like to request that the board be...have a long view as this is jumping off of a long-term solution. What I don't want to see happen is that this grant fixes something, and then in five years, we're stuck in the same place again because we've been outpaced. So I'd like the board to empower the telecommunications committee, the CTO, whoever the private partner might be, whatever needs to be done, that this is an expanding solution so that the next time something comes out, we can take advantage of it and we're not left, you know, hoping that, you know, broadband today is like DSL, you know, 10 years ago or 20 years ago. Secondly, Brook Road and flooding. I think that's something you may have all heard a lot about. If not, VDOT has from us, and we're going to continue to do that. But we would like...everybody in Aquia District would appreciate the entire board reaching out and harassing them. And the point of contact's on the Facebook pages, so. The last thing, since the previous speaker mentioned school buses. I've got two small kids, in a couple of years, they're going to be going to elementary school. And I had a hard time sending my middle schooler on the bus for an hour in the morning and in the afternoon. I'm not putting a five-year-old on the bus for an hour. I'm not sure what the county would need, but I don't want it to get lost, that parents are...we do have a vested interest in supporting the board when it's finding solutions for this. So I know nobody wants to pay for anything, but if there is something that the board, that the county needs from a resource perspective, you know, we're not opposed to it as long as we trust that you're using it responsibly to address the concerns of your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, seeing nobody. I'll bring this back to the board. Our first item is the continuation of a public hearing was in Mr. Dudenheffer's district. Mr. Harvey.
Madam Chair, for a reason previously entered into the record, I will remain recused on this topic.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cavalier. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As you mentioned, this is a continuation of the public hearing from October 16th. It's for a conditional use permit to allow a car wash in a highway corridor overlay zoning district pursuant to application CUP 17152112.
Yeah, and just to remind people, Mr. Dudenheffer was not with us that day. He could not attend our meeting. And at his request, we left the public hearing open so that it could be considered when he was here, present at the board.
And continuing on, this property where the car wash would be located is a 1.53-acre portion of a 24-acre parcel known as the Sessors Parcel 20-12. The applicant is Don C. Hart, and he's represented by Sherman Patrick of Compton &amp; Dooling. Again, this is the site location, highlighted in red along Garrisonville Road. The overall property is owned B2 Urban Commercial. To immediately to the west is North Stafford High School. To the east is the Park Ridge neighborhood. The southeast is Park Ridge Elementary School. And the property to the north is zoned a combination of B3 office and A1 agricultural. This aerial photo that shows the proposed location in relation to the surrounding properties in Garrisonville Road as well as the Resource Protection Area. The applicant had previously been granted an exception from the Chesapeake Bay Board to allow encroachments into the Resource Protection Area with offsetting mitigation to that stream and additional mitigation purchase of credits. This is our comprehensive plan, which recommends the property being located in a commercial corridor in a suburban area. This application is consistent with that designation. And from a zoning history standpoint, the property has been zoned for a number of years. The most recent zoning change was done in 2015 where they zoned the property or amended proffers on the property and have this layout shown here. This layout shows a number of retail businesses along Garrisonville Road with a primary access road into the site with a car wash located in this vicinity and several multi-tenant buildings as well as a storage warehouse facility or mini storage facility. The new generalized development plan shows a relocation of the car wash in a very similar location, but on the north side of the stream in that area. So based on the prior GDP, the prior GDP had the car wash in this location. This new location generally has the same physical characteristics as the prior location. It'll have two access points onto the main service drive, and its configuration allows to maximize traffic flow, so it minimizes potential impacts to Garrisonville Road. There are architectural design features with the application. This is what the architecture may look like and is included in the conditions. It meets a number of our standards, our neighborhood design standards requirements in the comprehensive plan, specifically brick facade, variation in roof line, standing seam metal roof. This is an example of a photo from a similar type of facility. As you can see from this diagram, you have air booms that work for the vacuuming system that come off of one of the side travel lanes from the tunnel car wash. The conditions for the permit specify conformance with the generalized development plan, the architectural rendering. It limits the car wash to a single stall, 4,000-square-foot building. There's hours of operation that are limited, requiring water recycling system be used. The dumpster would be located, so it'd be screened, and it'd also be designed to masonry materials to be compatible with the building. A signage would also be complimentary to the building, and interparcel connection is required to adjacent pad sites to the north. With regard to the findings, staff believes it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the commercial development pattern in the area along Garrisonville Road. It's compatible with our neighborhood design guidelines. And also, we believe the site is appropriate to minimize impacts to highway corridor overlay zone. There are no apparent negative aspects that we've noted to this point. Staff is recommending approval of the permit pursuant to Resolution R18-85 with the conditions, and the planning commission recommends 70 to support the application as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Harvey? Okay. All right. Would the applicant like to speak?
Thank you. Good evening. Jason Hickman of Compton &amp; Dooling, on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Patrick sends his regrets, but he has another hearing in another county. I do want to provide you with one document, and that's a more recent plan, if I could hand it up to you.
Could pass it to the clerk, please.
The purpose of showing you this is merely to show you that as part of what the applicant is doing, they are continuing the sidewalk across the VDOT property such that it will ultimately line up with what the school sidewalk is. And that is going to be something that the applicant is going to do. It's going to be basically at a cost of $125,000 to $150,000. But the applicant wants to make sure that that's in the plan so that it's accurate, that that is in fact what the applicant plans to do.
All right.
Oh, thank you. So I will briefly go through...Mr. Harvey hit on the major points, but I'll briefly go through the presentation. And please, if you have questions, ask. The original submission of this particular CUP was November 27, 2017. Went to Planning Commission earlier this year and has been to the board. The proposal overview is, this is B2 Urban Commercial. It's 1.5 acres of the 24-acre commercial development, and we're seeking a conditional use permit, which is being required because of the HCOD. We're within 200 feet of Garrisonville Road, 400 feet of residential, 160 feet of North Stafford High School. The overall plan totaled investment is going to be between $2.7 and $3.1 million. As presented previously by Mr. Harvey, the generalized development plan, the use limitations, as was already discussed, I will highlight that the car wash will utilize a water recycling system that's going to capture approximately 50% of the water. The property access, there's going to be a turn lane. It's going to have 200 feet of storage, 100 feet of taper, and that turn lane is going to go into the main access, which, as Mr. Harvey pointed out, that access will be to the site, and there will be two access points to the car wash in particular. The renderings, as Mr. Harvey already indicated, as well as the vacuum boom. One of the questions that was previously presented was, did this change the average daily trips? If you look, the Stafford Sports Complex, which was what was approved previously, had 5,317 average daily trips. Under the new Patriots Crossing, we're at 3,848 average daily trips. So in essence, we've reduced the impact by 28% by changing to the current plans. Again, you can see, based upon these two concepts, that we've reduced by 28% the daily trips. Mr. Harvey already went over the generalized development plan. I will say that the one thing that we're changing, and this is part of the agreement with the adjacent property, Park Ridge HOA, there's going to be fencing, and we have a letter from Park Ridge HOA that they're in agreement with this as well. If you need a copy of that, we can certainly provide a copy of the letter. That is, in essence, the presentation. I will say that, as I indicated, the sidewalk curb and gutter will be extended along Garrisonville Road across the VDOT's frontage as presented in the plan. As I indicated, Park Ridge HOA is in agreement and signed off on the buffer as of September 9th. The RPA, as was previously indicated, has been addressed. Their contributions are $32,909 in addition to the fact that there's specific restoration that's being required from the special exception from Chesapeake Bay. And I believe that's it, unless you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Dudenheffer?
Sorry I wasn't here at the last meeting. I don't intend to let that ever happen again. It was a huge mistake on my part, so I'm sorry for the inconvenience that you had to come back. I was told by Mr. Harvey that the sidewalk extension in front of the stormwater, the VDOT stormwater, cannot actually be proffered or written into the document. Is that correct? So we're basically going on your assertion that this will happen. Is that correct, Jeff?
That is correct, Mr. Dudenheffer. The VDOT property is off-site. CUP can only have the county impose conditions on the property in which the permit's applying to.
Okay. Question now, you know, I know this is extra, and I appreciate the sidewalks part of the discussion that Don and I have had on this. We don't talk about...the sidewalk is about 85% of the frontage, and there's about 15% by the Caldwell Banker...the Caldwell Banker facility over there where there won't be a sidewalk. So it's kind of not connected. I know it's another private piece of property. It's not like dealing with VDOT, which is a public entity. Have we made...have you made any contact with them about possibly extending it to Parkway Boulevard?
At this point...
Don, I hate to...we got a new guy here who hasn't been involved in this, so.
Tom Hart. Colonel Dudenheffer, I talked to Kevin Breen, who owns the facility on the corner that we are...that is the subject. Kevin suggested that the students could, and as they're doing now, can walk behind his building. He did say that the...his perceived problem with it was that the signage for Park Ridge is on the front of his property, and he didn't feel like...
So you're saying they could walk behind and cut over?
Yes, sir.
Isn't there fencing going to be along there? Would prohibit them from walking straight through that rear parking lot? Didn't we just say signage?
I personally don't know what would occur on the other side of his property. I don't know. I'm willing to work with the board to extend that sidewalk further on Kevin's property if it'll work.
Well, we can talk about it later. Like I said, this cannot be put into the...
Well, you have my pledge.
And I appreciate that. And I...much to the chagrin of some people, I believe you and I trust you, okay?
Well, we've engineered it now, and this is being submitted with our site plan.
And, yeah, okay. I understand.
And I'm more than happy to work with you in the future if, as we're saying, property that I don't own will facilitate this. I understand the importance of it, and I'm happy to...
It's always about the kids, you know?
Yes, sir.
So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other questions? Oh, Mr. Cohen.
Just because I'm a bit visual. I'm looking at the first rendition that we saw, that's on page 13, which basically, that original one had a way in and a way out. So there was sort of a loop factor in that. But the one that you just gave to us tonight, if I'm looking at it correctly, only has one road that comes in off of the Patriot Crossing Drive. So I just want to make sure I understand that correctly because it's...
There's two. So there's...
No, there's one.
No, I only see one. Thank you.
There's only a right in and right out.
Right.
And I can explain that.
Okay, that's cool. I just...it just...on this one, it just seemed to flow, and that one, I was just concerned about backup. But if you've got it under control, Mr. Dudenheffer...
Well, I'll make comments about different things once we have...once I can make the resolution. It's not necessarily...I don't have questions for him. Believe me, I've been dealing with this for a long time, so.
Okay.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this point in time, and we're going to continue the public hearing, you have three minutes to speak. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute remaining. When the red light turns, then you...your time is up. Is there anybody in the board chambers that would like to address the board on this specific
Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickett Lane.
Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane. Used to own property in the gerrymandered Garrisonville District, which is not a commercial corridor. So there's one of your negative impacts because I don't believe staff. Gary's Car Wash is down the road. McDonald's is a very good neighbor who holds many car washes because you don't support the school systems and their programs. So they have to get out there. And some of them risk their lives on 610 there, trying to make extra money. So you're already going to rubber stamp it. You know, I'm going to wear my captain bars in here next time. I want applicants to address me as Paul J. Waldowski, Captain, U.S. Air Force, retired. I just don't like deals in public hearings, and Park Ridge has more than one HOA. I believe there was six houses of aristocrats in there, so I don't believe that one is good enough. There's also an old oak tree that just fell down across the way over there. And just like you approved the 7-Eleven that was next to the other 7-Eleven because Walmart wouldn't let the old magnolia tree go, that's also on 610, which is where the true commercial corridor exists. The RPA is there for a reason, and I've said this for every CUP, a CUP is favoritism. It's not fairness, it's favoritism. You're all Republicans, except, I found out yesterday, you now have one Democrat. So I guess Lady Justice has to wear the pirate's patch on the left eye to favor the right, mostly. Sorry. Must feel good to be elected now instead of selected. Now, if we just get some other gerrymandering aspects in place. The sidewalk, well, let's be realistic. You're building... Sarah Palin said same thing with bridges to nowhere. That's what you have. I'm going to start bringing you pictures. There is a sidewalk to nowhere right at the end of McDonald's, and we'll have to bring it up on the screen here. You know, I'm tired of sending emails personally to you all. I'm just going to bring all my stuff here so the public sees the real issues that you should be making into opportunities.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on this public hearing?
Andrew Mudgeon, 2770 Brook Road. Regarding the conditional use permit we just heard, I would recommend that the board require the use of native plants for all landscaping, and I would recommend that as a county policy, not just, you know, whatever's cheap and on sale at the local nursery. Put stuff in that's going to make a difference, that's going to matter and be useful. And, you know, it's appropriate for the space. That should be what's used. And then not so much regarding the environmental impact, but has there been a stormwater study effect on the Park Ridge community? Because, I mean, as we've seen, at least on Brook Road, the more houses go in, the less drainage the area can support. So there's thousands, I believe there's probably thousands of homes and families in Park Ridge that sit downstream of this proposed development. And if that hasn't been considered, it needs to be, especially considering they just had the road closed for several days to repair washouts. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring this back to Mr. Dudenheffer. Ms. McLendon, you're looking over at me.
The applicant has a rebuttal.
Oh, well, I didn't know if there was... Okay, with the applicant, I'll keep the public hearing open. Do you have any rebuttal?
It's $180,000 for the plants. I mean, if he really wants to ask about the plants, the plants cost $180,000. That's the type of plants that are being put in. They're already engineered as part of the plants.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, I will bring this back to Mr. Dudenheffer. This is in his district, R-18-85.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I would like to go ahead and move for approval of R-18-85, and I'll have some comments after that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second?
Second.
First off, Park Ridge has six sub HOAs and one master HOA that covers, and has membership from all their various sub HOAs. So they're heard from in this. The property across the street, which has the dead oak tree, is a private property that has a conservation easement placed on it by the owners of the property, and it will never be developed. They made sure of that, and that was their wishes. And there, as private citizens, they are allowed to do that. I would like to have seen a Walmart there personally, but it wasn't meant to be, and that wasn't what they desired to have happen. So just to clarify a couple of things. This is a development that I've worked on for many, many years when I was on the board the last time. And I was the one who negotiated the propers with the other owner for the recreational center, the swimming pool and stuff that was going to go in there, which at the time, I told the developer, I didn't see it viable in that location at all, but of course, he was determined to go forward, and I pushed forward for the best deal I could get for the county. And there was a lot of shared usage between this swimming pool and the facilities there with the high school. So in my mind, you know, even though it's right next to the high school, it was going to be a win-win because North Stafford could use the facilities that were there. There was going to be a shared use. I also knew at the time that we were looking for an opportunity to build a center like the Ralph Center, which would have made this basically obsolete. But we didn't have the property in the plan in at the time. So it's private property. I made the best deal that I could. So I left the board, and I saw this developing along the way, and I saw a lot of the things that I had saw as synergy with the development and the high school kind of slip away. And it disturbed me. I thought that in many cases, we were kind of giving away the farm and that, you know, we could have held out for a better deal. But I wasn't here to be able to do that. And the board passed by a four to three vote for the approval for the new ownership and the propers that are in place, which are in place and are now by right. My negotiating point with Mr. Hart and them was, they had already received approval and it was by right. So what we're here talking about today is a conditional use permit, which would authorize the use of the car wash, which was already in the earlier GDP on the site. It just changed the location of that. Do I think this is the best use for a facility, a commercial facility next to North Stafford High School? No, I don't. I don't think it is. It's the only commercial development we have next to a high school in the county, and I would have preferred, given the choice, to do something different. The property, I'm kind of flabbergasted overall by the VDOT approval for a one right in, right out for the commercial development. I think that that's going to be a stretch. I don't, I find it hard to believe there's fewer people going to, or trips that are going to go in and out of there. But again, this was approved by VDOT and approved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors in a prior arrangement. I come on the stage again, I've received several emails from people just in the last two weeks saying that, you know, I need to stop this. We need to not do this. This is, you know, this is not conducive. We don't need a car wash right next to the North Stafford High School. At this point, they had already gotten involved with the subdivision, which was on the other side, and made an agreement with them. I believe that when you make an agreement, whether I'm in office or my predecessor was in office, that was an agreement that was made. So I met with Mr. Hart on a number of occasions, with Ms. Knight and several other people. I feel that they're conscientious in what they want to come in and do. They're concerned. They listened to my concerns, and we worked and had numerous in-depth discussions about what could happen here. What we didn't talk about here is in the propers, it talks about an interparcial connection between this development and Wolverine Way, which runs out to a stoplight and connects with Joy Street and 610. For the last several months, I've tried to get the school system to rethink their automatic, no, we don't want that, to see what it would benefit for them. And with a new superintendent, those conversations haven't borne much fruit. While I'm getting a lukewarm pushback on it now as opposed to an absolute no, I'm still talking to them about what's in their best interest. But there's some serious concerns about the interparcial connection, which I think are necessary to support this because of the congestion on 610 and the traffic that goes into the high school at that major intersection. But the propers, which were approved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, authorizes a $275,000 proffer for that interparcial connection. And our estimates here in the county put the cost of what would be required at over $500,000. So there was a gap. And where the, Mr. Hart and I had numerous conversations about that, and he just said that his development can't pay the extra money for it. So at the very minimum, I'm short of where do I come up with the extra money for this, for the interparcial connection, which I think is necessary for this. Also, we need to always keep in mind on 610 is that eventually, we're going to extend Courthouse Road from Eustace Road onto Shelton Chop to six lanes, which we, you know, we've done and now completed as far as Eustace Road. And that will make most of the improvements that we make on the intersection moot. So we will have spent the money on a new intersection with some improvements that we're going to have to pay again for something in the future. So it kind of puts it out of its, puts it beyond where, you know, it's difficult to spend money on something you know that eventually is going to be torn out. The sidewalk is something, though, that we talked at length about. And it was, while he is required to build some pedestrian accommodations across the front of his property, there was no proffer or no need for him under the law and under his by right and propers on his approved development to build anything in front of the stormwater pond that VDOT owns at the corner of his property. But he volunteered to do that. I know it's going to cost him some extra money, and I appreciate that effort. There are some other areas where, as we move along, we're going to have to look at. There's a trail in the back of this that connects Park Ridge Elementary School and North Stafford High School. I'd like to find a way that we can keep that. But that, again, that's not part of the CUP discussion right now. As I said earlier, the fact that he's volunteered to build this, I can't put it in writing, which someone suggested that I do, because this is part of a CUP. It's not a proffer change, which would have been added, which he would have been willing to do, but would have cost him more money to open up the proffer discussion again, and he would have had to put it in, and I'm not interested in doing that. So I'm hoping, and we'll keep looking at this as a development that I think provides some support for North Stafford High School. There's some talk about, you know, employment opportunities, maybe some additional fast food, other than just the McDonald's on the corner for kids to go eat at. I mean, so there are opportunities here, and we talked about those, and I think he's conscientious about providing those. And if we build another nail salon or whatever, my wife won't let me come home. So I think we're overall in good shape. So again, this isn't an optimal plan for me. I, you know, and I can think of a lot of things I'd like to put next to North Stafford High School than this and where we're going, but this is what was approved, and that's the way the law reads, and I can't, I'm not going to even attempt to modify it or change it. I appreciate Mr. Hart's openness to suggestions and some things we've talked about. I'll continue to meet and talk with him about, you know, as we move along and we look at the future of development. So at this point, knowing that there's still some open-ended items on this thing, but the plan has been basically approved, and this is for a conditional use permit for him to open up a car wash on the property, which was already approved, just on a different location, I'm going to ask the board members to support me in approving this CUP for the future.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mark has made his comments. Any other comments? Mr. Cohen.
Just very quickly, I'll support you, Mr. Dudenheffer. I don't want an interconnector, and I don't want restaurants there, because I know people at North Stafford, and they have a difficulty with students sneaking out during lunch, which they're not allowed to do.
You're not supposed to tell us that.
I know. Well, sorry. And I'm not keen on the interconnector, so I'm happy that that's not working out, because I just don't think that that's, we need that traffic coming in there at that time, but it's not there, so I'm okay with that. And there's no real plans yet for a restaurant, so I'm okay with that. So I will support it for that, and it may well create some jobs that can be part of the workforce, really early release that students can do.
Okay. With a motion and a second, the only thing I would like to state is, I did not support this when it first came to the board. I was in the losing minority of three people because I did not think it was a good project right next to North Stafford for various reasons that have already been stated. But I am going to support this now because I think you've done the best with it that you possibly can, and I appreciate your efforts there on behalf of the community. So with that, we have a motion and a second, and no other discussion. Cast your vote, please. Tally the vote. Motion passes with one that is abstention. Thank you. It's getting late. Okay. With that, we are going to move on to our next public hearing. This last item is an amended proffer condition regarding a nursing facility that's located on the property in the George Washington District.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is classified as a minor proffer amendment. So for the knowledge of the board and the public, a minor proffer amendment involves changes to one or two propers typically. And this proffer amendment is mainly focused on the allocation of housing unit types within this overall project. A minor proffer amendment is not intended to increase the intensity or density of a particular project or have some significant impact to the community. The requested proffer amendment is for two parcels, 44-F2 and F2B. That area is 16.77 acres. The applicant is Stafford SNF Investors LLC, and they're represented tonight by Charlie Payne. The property is located off of Brimley Drive, which comes off of Brea Church Road. The site is highlighted in the red outline. The property is zoned LC, life care. Life care zoning category is intended to be a graduated care campus for retirees. So part of that concept is that you'll have some people that'll live there in apartments and condos, and they'll be just like anybody else. Then you can move up to assisted living, where you may need to have some assistance from folks occasionally on providing medication and other lighthouse keeping types of activities, and then eventually nursing care if you cannot, no longer take care of yourself. The surrounding zoning of the area is a combination of light industrial to the south with Stafford Industrial Park in this general vicinity. And then also, we have parts of England Run North, which are located to the east, which is zoned R1 Suburban Residential. We also have the Brea Knowles Neighborhood, which is zoned R1 Suburban Residential immediately across the street, and then some agricultural zone property further to the west on Brea Church Road. For purposes of the discussion, this amendment will use the terms assisted living, independent living, and then also refer sometimes to them as dwelling... living, and then also refer sometimes to them as dwelling units or beds. Assisted living units are generally classified by the number of beds. An independent dwelling unit, as mentioned earlier, is typically thought of as an apartment or condominium unit and it's equivalent to two beds. The proffers talk interchangeably about the AL and IL types of units that could be on the property. For some of the background, this property was zoned in 2008 for the life care retirement community. In 2009, they received a site plan for the entire facility, which included all three properties involved. In 2009, the proffers were amended to allow phasing of the project because there was required improvements to Brea Church Road, which weren't tied up to a VDOT project with the widening of Route 17. So in essence, they had to phase some of their project to allow temporary access through the industrial park as their primary access for a short period of time. That also caused the first nursing home to be built with that access. In 2014, there was an amendment to the proffers dealing with assisted living and independent living units to give them more flexibility in the existing building that they have out on parcel two. And then also, there was in 2017, another amendment to that to add more flexibility. Because they've seen over time that oftentimes, a couple will move into an independent living unit and then one of the spouses will need the assisted living level of care. At that point in time, that unit converts over to the AL designation. So they needed additional flexibility as units move in and out between the IL and AL designations.
Okay, Ms. Mauer.
So I have a question. On these proffers, as we move between the ILs and the AL units, the proffers are affiliated with the IL units, specifically $7,995 per IL unit. When we went in 2008, so originally when this plan was approved, there were 240 IL units identified. And at $7,995 per IL unit, that would have been a proffer amount to the county of $1.9 million. Am I correct on this?
Yes.
Okay, so then we go into August of, or June of 2014, and we allow them to go from 240 IL units down to 207 IL units. Because I understand the changing in the market, but that change in the market, we went from $1.9 million in proffers down to $1.6 million in proffers. Then we look at June 2017, where we switched the IL units now from 207 down to 100 guaranteed IL units. And that 100 guaranteed IL units took our proffers from an original $1.9 million down to $799,000. Then now we're looking at a guaranteed IL unit of 46, which takes our proffers from an original in 2014 of $1.9 million down to a whopping $239,850. Am I correct in the way I'm assessing this?
You're correct in how the proffers would play out as the unit mix changes. The proffers are intended to deal with the offsite impacts of the development. And part of the reason why there's a proffer for the IL units and not the AL units is that the people that are independent are going to have more taxes on, or likely tax our county facilities more so than the assisted living folks, specifically for transportation, parks, libraries needs. Fire and rescue, there may be a slightly higher need for assisted living.
And that's where I'm getting concerned.
Than there is for the independent living units.
So we talked earlier today in the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting about the chipping. And the chipping away at requirements and how we approve something and we chip at it. This chipping of $1.9 million down to $239,000 is a significant chipping over four years.
And Ms. Mauer, this proffer sets a floor for the number of IL units that could be in the project.
Right.
Again, the project is, the zoning category is intended to have a variety of unit types. So they can, again, switch between IL and AL units. However, if there's an increase in IL units, they may have to still pay proffers. So if some of the assisted living units further shift over to IL, that may kick in the proffer requirement.
But the guaranteed floor went from 1.9 to 239.
Yes.
Okay.
This is an aerial photo that shows the existing conditions on the overall property. As I noted earlier, we have a nursing home facility, which has been built. That is not part of this proffer amendment for tonight's hearing. We have the independent assisted living facility here, which has been built. And we currently have a overflow parking lot on parcel 2B, which is located here, which accommodates 42 parking spaces. So the proffer amendment is intended on speaking to, proffer 2B is being redeveloped as a nursing home facility. This is the current generalized development plan with the proffers. The parcel 2B has depicted the concept of three buildings, which could house independent and assisted living units associated with them. The new generalized development plan shows one building on that same piece of property, but this building would be a nursing home building. During the discussion with the planning commission, they had a lot of back and forth with the applicant about the overflow parking spaces. There was a citizen that came to the public hearing and expressed concern about the parking situation with the overall complex. So the applicant worked with the planning commission in coming up with a layout which could demonstrate how they could potentially meet all the concerns about the additional parking. The 40 of the 42 spaces that were in that overflow lot are necessary for both the nursing home and the assisted independent living building. This assisted independent living building also has some parking underneath the structure. Areas shown in yellow would be required for both sites for both facilities. The blue would be strictly necessary for the new nursing home facility. There is an alternative for the design, too, that they could locate four additional spaces along the cul-de-sac if they needed to. There was a lot of discussion about parallel parking along the main access road. One concept plan had shown parallel parking on both sides of the road. The commission had concerns about that and asked the fire marshal to weigh in. The fire marshal was concerned if they didn't further widen the road, that there could be problems. So this is the latest concept that came out. When they come in to submit their site plan for the nursing home, they're going to have to show compliance with all the minimum travel lane width requirements. In addition to that, all the parking requirements and the new parking standards for the current size of spaces. As you recall, last month, the board approved an amendment to our parking standards, which increased the size of parking spaces. So these new spaces will have to meet the new nine-by-20 size requirements. The proffers would eliminate the prior proffer about the phasing and access because those have already been accomplished through prior construction. Proffer number five reduces the number of assisted living beds and independent living beds from 556 to 346 and restrict those unit types to parcel two. They also would add the 9D bed nursing home facility on parcel 2B.
Mrs. Mauer.
Okay, so one of the questions I have, and I've been trying to go through the documents, the first parcel, the second parcel, in total, what was approved originally, regardless of makeup of beds, the number of beds?
And Ms. Mauer, I'll have to read through the documentation to answer your question directly. So if you can give me a few minutes after the presentation, I'll...
Okay, so the crux of the question is, because I see some reductions in beds and mix-ups and everything else, but for, in totality, and maybe Charlie can answer this question when he comes up, in totality, have we had a reduction in beds? Or are we just reducing the bed mix, which gets them out of proffers?
And I'll look at that. And I'm sure Mr. Payne can probably answer your question directly as well. With regard to the proffer number five, it's limited to the existing building on parcel two. It retains a requirement to provide at least 30 independent living units. There would not necessarily be a no-net reduction for residents on site. As Ms. Mauer talked about, there would be a potential impact on cash proffers. The applicant has modified proffer number nine with regard to proffers with additional donations. And previously, there had been a payment of $25,000 for the certificate of occupancy at the second building under phase two, which now there would only be one building under this new phase with the nursing home. So that proffer dollar amount has been increased to $50,000. And I may not have said that correctly. There was, it was going to be $25,000 paid when the second AL/IL building on parcel 2B was to be built. Since now there's only going to be one building, it's referring to the second building for overall phase two.
So it's a net, it's still the same amount of money?
A net gain of $25,000. Again, going back to the phasing. That proffer nine was structured to basically say that whenever the second building in this complex here was built, they would pay the $25,000. Now it says it's the second building, which would be the whole nursing home for that parcel. $50,000 would be paid prior to the occupancy permit. I just mentioned about proffer nine, proffer 10, the travelway standards increases all onsite travelway requirements from 18 to 22 feet. Again, trying to address the concerns that the planning commission had in their discussion with the fire marshal. Number 24 deletes reference to the existing nursing homes, since it's not subject to this proffer amendment. And then same with 28. Prior to this property being developed, there was a stream that was degraded in the area and they've gone ahead and fixed that stream up and remedied the problems. Overall, from a staff perspective, we feel that this request is still consistent with the comprehensive plan and the intent of the zoning ordinance. The adjustment between IL and AL beds to nursing home beds decreases the overall number of residents in the facility, which may be a good thing. Allowing the development to adjust its residential offerings. And this amendment also allows them to continue to be flexible to meet the needs of the market and the residents that live there. And this proffer amendment cleans up a number of things that have already been complied with or no longer apply because of the nature of this site and this property. At this point in time, we're not seeing any negative aspects. And staff is recommending approval of the amendment pursuant to ordinance 01841. The planning commission in September recommended approval as well.
Any other questions for Mr. Harvey? Okay, thank you, Mr. Harvey. All right, would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and the members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Charlie Payne with the law firm Herschler. We have shaken the name Fleischer as part of our name. So it's part of my marketing requirements, I just got to tell you we're Herschler now.
Interesting.
Notwithstanding, not Herschel Payne, no.
Did you tell Fleischer?
No, we did not. Great story about those two guys, but I'll share with you some other time. Anyways, I appreciate staff's presentation. Just one correction to Jeff's presentation, the fire marshal actually was okay with our Brimley Drive connection in the parking. So that was addressed and that came up in the planning commission as well. And just real quick to kind of go through some of the questions that Ms. Mauer asked, you know, the question of whether, you know, how we got to this point, I mean, it really is driven by need and market. You know, the initial concept was obviously with life care to have a stronger independent living component, which is why we had proffers connected to it. You know, the flip side of that is if you don't have the units, you don't have the impact. So you're not losing necessarily money if you don't have the impact. So I just want you to take that into consideration as well. But it wants to be a mixed campus, if you will, so that folks could age in place. And what you're seeing now, the trend, folks are not necessarily needing the assisted living as much as we had anticipated initially. And the independent living wants to be independent, not necessarily on the campus. But what you're seeing with independent is when folks need to be in an AL facility, if you have two spouses and one needs to be in AL, the other would want to remain in IL. So that's what the niche is currently on the site. And what we really love about this project, when it was initially approved in 2008, and the vision the county had for it, because that actually, that ordinance was created because of this project, was it would be an age-in-place development. It also fit something really important at the time. We only had one nursing home facility at the time in Stafford County, had one failing horribly. So the county, in its infinite wisdom at that time, said, we want to make sure you build a nursing home facility first. So that was the first phase of this project. So we built the nursing home facility first. And then phase two was two buildings. One of the buildings is there currently, which includes the IL and AL mix. There's 46 current IL units in there, there's 127 licensed AL beds. The units for IL, and the reason why I say it that way, is the state licensed beds for AL. And for IL, they don't license, but it's a unit that includes two beds. So to answer your question, there's 346 beds in building one of phase two. Build the new building, which was supposed to include IL and AL, will only be skilled nursing, we're proposing in this proffer amendment, will only be skilled nursing beds. And it'll be 90 of those, up to 90 of those, okay?
The total number of beds, and I get the IL has two beds and the AL has two beds, all of that. Total number of beds originally was?
556.
556. And at the end of the day, when this is fully built out, phase one, phase two, parcel two, 2B, one building, three buildings, is?
346 and 90.
Okay, so you are dropping it by 200 beds.
No, it's not that much. It's less than that.
Five to three.
I can tell you.
Plus 90 is 436.
436.
Okay, so you're dropping it about 100 beds.
About 100 beds.
Okay.
Yeah. And remember, the reason for the proffer connected to the ILs was to address the impacts. If you don't have the ILs, you don't have the impacts.
But you do have fire and rescue and other impacts.
Well, that, but that wasn't being paid for by IL. That was being driven, no. The fire and rescue component, for whatever that would be connected to IL, would be paid via proffers. But the AL and the nursing facility did not pay any proffers. Right. But we paid proffers for the overall project. You'll see that those have been paid and they're in place. So we'll get into those. And I'm talking about in-kind proffers. So we've probably exhausted this component. Since the initial zone, the applicant has, again, constructed the two buildings, one phase one and phase two, and currently has both AL and IL in the 90-bed nursing home facility. We are asking for a minor proffer amendment here to adjust some GDP adjustments and also to change the uses in building two of phase two. So the initial phase of this will be 63 skilled nursing beds. Okay, and we'll get into the reasons for this. The Commonwealth of Virginia has determined that this Planning District 16, Stafford County, actually will have the largest deficit in Planning District 16, which I'm sure you have heard from the community. So by 2020 and 2021, we're going to have about a 97-bed deficit in Stafford County. As you know, today, there's only two nursing home facilities, at Woodmont and currently at Falls Run. The aging population, again, in Stafford is expected to be 43.7% of the total in Region 16. There's a new statute out there that allows you, it used to be that you had to go to the state, even if there were extra bids in one location, you would have to go to the state to get approval for your own district for beds, irrespective that there were too many bids in some other district. The state now allows you to transfer those bids. So in this case, we're transferring from District 22 to 16, because it was determined by the state that they had exceeded their capacity requirements. So that's what we did. We went to the state and we got approval for that to shift 63 beds. And we need your approval in order to build the facility. Again, here's Planning District 16, and I know you're very familiar with it, we're the star in that location. We're the star in that location. Not necessarily because we're all the star, but I just wanted you to know where the site was. And also four is Woodmont, I'm sorry, four is Falls Run and seven is Woodmont. And again, here's the numbers that, that we presented to the state, and the state confirmed regarding the need by 2021. Again, this is a unique opportunity to get this transfer to Stafford County to address a need. And it's going to take us a couple of years if we started right away to get this constructed. So we want to make sure we have the facility in place by the time the need hits its peak. You know, the, the other good, very positive thing about a project like this, it does generate very positive tax revenue and new jobs. And most of those jobs are highly skilled, healthcare-related jobs. And we're going to invest about nine to ten million dollars in the new facility. You'll see there is a petition in your packet, I don't know if you got it from me, but if it's in the staff packet, there's two. It's more than sixty, there's like eighty-plus signatures there from local residents and people who have a relationship with the facility and who are very, very supportive of us. Mary Washington Healthcare, which I'm sure doesn't surprise you, has expressed very strong support for this project. Dr. McDermott, you'll see a letter here. The hospital has a great working relationship with Falls Run. So you'll see that that's expressed in his letter here. And we were able to utilize this letter, obviously, to help us get support from the state for the transfer. Again, many residents in the community in Stafford County and the immediate area will benefit from this. Far too often, I hear stories about having to displace families, meaning that there's not enough beds in one facility, and you got to take them to another jurisdiction, sometimes even out of this entire region. So having a facility like this truly fits a community, keeps families together. And again, these facilities are new. They have sprinkler system through the entire facility, twenty-four hour supervision and care. And again, a modern building. Station twelve, Berea Fire Station is not very far away. And we can still, if the market changes, get sixty-nine IL units in the current facility that's building one of phase two. Paid proffers to date are $368,000 on the forty-six IL units that we have. As part of the proffer requirements, in the original application, we had to make about $582,000 in road improvements at the intersection of Berea Church Road and Route seventeen. We've also paid already $50,000 in cash proffers for the recreation facility. And basically, I mean, that, recreational proffers, I mean, basically, that's, you know, that's, that's a plus for the county, and we're going to pay another $50,000 for this, I'm sorry.
Ms. Mauer?
Okay, so you've already paid $368,000 in cash proffers for the IL units. Those are the forty-six independent units that are currently there.
Correct.
So, so in your mind, from here on out, proffers are paid, you have met your floor?
Well, no.
Or is there an additional forty-six, or is there an additional thirty units coming as part of this proffer amendment?
No, well, there's no additional units coming, it just doesn't cap us, we don't have a cap.
I understand, I'm looking at floor, the worst-case scenario.
Floor is forty-six, we can't go below, I mean, we're not going to change the IL to AL.
And that's already been paid and said and done?
Paid, exactly.
Okay.
And we pay them at, at permit stage, I mean, I'm sorry, at CO stage. Again, there was interest improvements that were required, I don't know if you've been there. There's, you know, with the blinking lights and the, and the turn lanes, et cetera, those were required. Of course, all the buildings are sprinkled. Parking, parking was a question in the planning commission level. I don't, stage, I don't want you to think that the parking in the, in the beautiful yellow and blue Stafford High School colors was necessarily the only parking for this facility. So it was just showing where we were relocating the forty parking spaces that are currently auxiliary parking, and then the new seventy-five we have to have. But all around that building, the current facility, in the nursing home facility, there's parking. And there's also garage, underground garage parking as well. So there's lots of parking on the site, sidewalks connect. So you'll be, be able to get to and from if you're a visitor, and the employees will basically, basically park behind the buildings. So we meet, just so you know, we meet, we meet the new parking regulation requirements, just so you know. And I'm happy to answer your questions.
Right, any questions for Mr. Payne?
Thank you.
Okay, no questions, thank you. At this point in time, we'll open the public hearing. Same rules apply. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. Would anyone in the board chambers like to address the board on this facility?
Should have changed shirts. Paul Lobowski, Eight Picket Lane. Will not come. I am a baby boomer, and you're never going to get me in any Stafford County nursing home. I have firsthand experience with hospice, Medicaid, and Medicare, and I won't divulge my personal findings in either one of those. I will not listen to any applicant who is not a senior citizen, who's going to make direct comments that this is age in place development. You have no idea that when people are sixty-five, they have to go on Medicare. They have to be deducted from their social security check if they are on Medicare. I don't care about your permit stages, and wow, five hundred fifty-six. Man, your figures are so good, and three forty-six plus ninety is four thirty-six. So wowee, you really have a whole bunch. Your statistic forty-three point seven percent is fake news, just like life care is two four-letter words, fake news. Life care exists because I am a retired Senate employee. And guess who supports life care? The federal government. That's the only reason they do anything for anything. Good questions about 1.9 million down to 239,000. Looks exactly like a Ponzi scheme to me, but what can I say? You will be supporting any towing company because if we get an empty sheriff's car out there, hey, you might deter it, maybe you'll get some good parking out of that. Oh yeah, nine by twenty slots, what can I say? And Mary Washington endorsing things? Hey, I got a scar this big gallbladder surgery. And if I wasn't a medic during Vietnam AMA against medical advice. So everyone needs how to learn that if someone's saying you're on drugs, I'm not on meds. That's what some people tell me on Facebook, get off your meds. I must have PTSD, not really. But sign me up. I mean, man, I want it, I want a independent unit. And I got my three Mercedes, so you got some parking, okay? They're 2001, 2003, 2003. In 2028, I'll come back here and I'll show you my antique license plate because I'm a property investor. I gave my last vehicle, the eighty-nine Volvo, to the Vietnam Veterans of America.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there anything the applicant would like to add? No, I did.
I have nothing to ask unless you have questions.
Any questions? Okay, we're good, thank you, Mr. Payne. All right, we'll bring this back, this is in the George Washington District.
I'm going to move for zero one eight dash four one, and then I'll have comments.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion, Mr. Cohen?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very familiar with this. When this first came up, I was on the planning commission, I went out to the facility, I toured it. The situation for the elderly is rather personal, so I don't think it should be flippantly remarked upon, and I find that offensive. Our senior citizens deserve to have good care. One of my family members went into a facility, I said this when it came to us before, they wanted that flexibility. I think that that is crucial, I think that treats our seniors with respect. Particularly, the Korean War generation is the one that is in the position right now that they are in need of these types of facilities. So I, I watched the planning commission hearing, I heard the great discussion about parking spaces and the yellow and blue colors, maybe in the future, we could use Colonial Forge colors. So I'm, I think we should do this, or Brookpoint, I have multiple flexibility here. Thank you. The, I'm in favor of this because I think that the sooner we get this approved, the sooner the building gets built. I understand the concerns that certain members have about the proffers. Quite honestly, the sooner this gets built, the sooner they will, that will no longer be an issue. And also, if memory serves me, and I'm sure somebody always corrects me if I'm wrong, but when you are dealing with the types of units, you are required to tell the state and then required to tell the county so that if they go higher up in the IL, then we'd be, would be informed of that, and then they would know they'd have to pay us more proffer money. And I see heads bobbing, so I actually listened when I heard that way back many years ago. So I understand the concern, but I also understand by having this flexibility, if they find they need more independent living, then we will get additional money in proffers. They paid up a lot, almost all the proffers so far in advance, which I thought was a very good faith effort. And way back at the beginning of this, you talked about doing the roadwork, and I believe you've said it's already done. Which is, I think, if memory serves me, is before the second building, it was sort of phrased that by the time the next buildings were done, they would get the roadwork done, and they actually did it ahead of time. So I just think that this, we need to make this available for our seniors, and I think it's a good investment to, for our county.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Snellings?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I do know there's a huge need in the area, and we keep talking seniors, and that is, I'm a senior. That's true, but you've got a lot of people on these homes that are not seniors, due to accidents, due to all kinds of different things. I don't have an issue with the fire and rescue because we have a fire and rescue ambulance fee. And I can tell you, all of the residents, or I would say ninety-nine percent of them at these facilities, have some type of insurance or Medicare that takes care of that fee. Now, I have personal experience here. I have a family member in Falls Run now. And the one thing I disagree with the applicant on is the proffers going from IL to AL. AL generates more traffic than IL. And I know that from experience because a member of my family is at Falls Run every day at least three times, maybe five times a day. Whereas in the IL, if you've just got one person that has a driver's license, they're not going to generate that much traffic. So in my opinion, just based on what I've seen since I've been going up there for the last month, the AL is generating a lot more traffic than the IL. So that gives me a little bit of concern. I know there's a need, I'm not going to hold this up, but the one concern I had was that, was the proffers. Thank you.
Ms. Mauer?
So my last three years on this board has been very interesting. And, and Mr. Payne has come before us on a number of occasions, and, and you know what, Mr. Payne? I know you called me and asked me if I had any questions, and, and I'm sorry that this kind of jumped out at me today. Otherwise, I would have asked you about it. So I do apologize for that. You, you did ask me for any heads up. However, we, we get these new projects that come in, and, oh, and we're going to get millions of dollars, and it's all going to be good, and it's all going to come to Stafford County, and, and we do these initial approvals. And then slowly but surely, we start chipping away at all of this greatness that Stafford County is going to get through these proffer amendments. And I am a little disappointed, Mr. Foley, that, that this wasn't highlighted in the board package. That I had to catch this on my own, I'm just not throwing stones, but this is something that we need to start really focusing on as we are doing these types of analyses. I can't support it. I desperately know that there's a need. I desperately, I, I, I get that this would be good for Stafford County, but we need to mitigate the impacts. And the fact that, that there isn't any sort of give and take on this, or any acknowledgement, it wasn't, you know, it, it, it's disappointing, quite frankly, to go from 1.9 million in guaranteed proffers to, and I'm going to give you the three sixty-eight because you've already paid the three sixty-eight. The, the bottom line number was two thirty-nine, but you've paid the three sixty-eight for the forty-six IL units that are in there. That's difficult for me, very difficult. And, and to, to not have that addressed and to chip away at these, these promises as we move along. In, in good conscience, I just can't do it. And, you know, if, if we wanted to talk about mitigating some of these, this lost money to Stafford County, you know, great, but, but we're, we're going down significantly between the last time, and I believe I voted for the proffer amendment last time, and this time, and, and I just, I just can't do it.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Cavalier?
I, I support this effort a hundred percent because I know the need is there. And people have to always understand, proffers are both voluntary and negotiable. And while there was guidelines and is still some, you know, numbers that we always consider in our head as appropriate, sometimes the need for something far outsee the need for the service, far out exceeds the need for the money. And, you know, I, I don't see this as being a burden on, on our local government, to tell you the truth, in any way, shape, or form. I think it's an added benefit to our local economy and to the government and the services that we provide. So I, you know, I'm all for this, and, and I'm glad they're here. And, you know, the state has even said, we don't have enough. So we're filling the need, and that, that's more important sometimes than the difference in money.
Okay, Ms. Shelton?
I want to thank the applicant too because I, we all are subject to seeing all the different reports that are coming out. Tell us exactly what my colleagues have said, is that not only do we not have enough, or enough space now, we don't have enough for the, even the near future, let alone the future future. And so I absolutely support this, and I agree that we need it now. And I really want to thank you for bringing this forward to us. And I look forward to seeing what other types of opportunities you can do in that one facility because there's so many opportunities for those citizens that live in those places. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Snellings?
Just a quick comment, I understand where Ms. Mauer's coming from, I agree with her analogy, but having personal experience in this, as I've had in the last six weeks, believe me, the need is there. And I think we need to move past the proffer money. We've got another hundred and twenty-bed unit going before the planning commission next month, and that'll be up in North Stafford. So believe me, the need is there. When you hit Mary Washington Hospital and you need to go to a care center, and your family doesn't know where you're going, believe me, it's nerve time. I mean, when they walk in the room, say, oh, great news, you're going to somewhere here in Fredericksburg. You're going to Falls Run, or you're going to Encompass. That's celebration time, because you could be going to Culpeper, or Ashland, or Hanover. So that's the reason I'm going to support it. Thank you.
So I think all my colleagues made good points here. And, you know, Wendy's comments are probably tempered a little bit from, we just came out of a five-year financial planning work session upstairs, and we looked at what our gap is. So anyway, we definitely have the need. I'm glad Berea Church Road is being upgraded as we speak right now because that road definitely needs it, and that's where this is located. But everybody makes good points, but I do believe there is a need in the community. So with that, Mr. Cohen has made a motion, and there's a second with no other comments. Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to one. All right, so with that, Mr. Snellings is going to read us back into closed session to wrap up some items, outstanding items we have.
Whereas the board is asked to hold closed meeting for one consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff pertaining to IOT versus Stafford County and 127 Poplar Junior LLC versus Stafford County, where such consultation or briefing is open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating and litigating posture of the board. And two, discussion concerning a prospective business where no previous announcement has been made of the business interest in locating its facilities in the county. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2 dash three seven one one A five and A seven, such discussions may occur in closed meetings, so moved.
Okay, I have a Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cast your vote to go into closed session. Tally the vote, please. Motion passes. We are, the board is now in closed session.